So we'll start, uh, before we get into the budgets, just one quick update. We did complete that bond refinancing.
Jim took care of it.
We put eleven million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there.
There it is.
Uh, I don't have the charts on this. It's a average interest rate of about two point four percent. Uh, so it's gonna result over the life of the bond, savings of one point five million. Average is about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, uh, in, uh, on the, uh, board meeting on the seventeenth, Bruce Lefler's gonna come and summarize the, uh, the bond that we just issued and also talk about the potential to create some more refinancing, a couple more bond issues we have that are eligible for refinancing, but interest rates are continuing to remain low. And so that gives us these refinancing opportunities. And like I say, uh, what we did relatively painlessly was worth a million and a half dollars, so it's pretty beneficial. So, uh, we'll talk about it more, uh, at the next board meeting. Uh, so now we'll shift over to the budget. And today we're gonna do, uh, about six different groups, uh, two of which really are out of the health center, the health center itself, and then community mental health, uh, which is a subset of the health center. Uh, so quick overview before I turn it over to DeeDee and Jim. Budget employees, uh, this is our largest, uh, cost center, uh, within the county. It has four hundred and forty-eight employees. Uh, its current budget is just about forty-seven million dollars. Uh, year-to-date, they're about eighty percent spent, that eighty-three percent of the year complete, which I'm taking as meaning they won't need any sort of supplement for the remainder of the year. Right? Yeah.
Yes, I like that answer.
He told us not to be too confident, so.
So their, uh, projected revenue is about thirty-two and a half million. So if you always take that number, the thirty-two and a half from the, uh, forty-six, that shows what their net contribution is. Uh, and typically, they've been holding pretty firm over the past few years. That's right around, uh, thirteen million a year in terms of, uh, uh, property tax contribution towards the health center. So the, uh, majority of it is definitely coming through their, uh, uh, revenue that they get from other sources. And their, uh, payroll is twenty-five million. It's a pretty labor-intensive, uh, operation, given that it runs twenty-four seven. Uh, and then, real quick, I think I'll just do community mental health too, and then we'll let, uh, them just do it all together when they go. So, community mental health center has eighty-eight people, about a seven million dollar current budget. Eighty-two are seventy-five percent spent at eighty-three percent of the year, so I don't think they're anticipating any sort of budget supplement this year. Uh, they've been really good at increasing their, uh, sources of revenue through grants or region six or whatever, so that now they're about, uh, four point seven million in revenue that they receive. And, uh, their, uh, basically, uh, payroll is, you know, ninety, almost ninety percent of their operations with about six point three million of their seven million budget, uh, going towards personnel. Uh, so that's a quick, uh, snapshot of where they are today. And now I will turn it over to Jim and DeeDee to talk about, uh, the budget projection for the, uh, health center.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for the opportunity to share with you about our budget for next year.
I know you're excited.
We are. And, uh, on first page, we'll just give you a brief description of the, of the health center. As many of you know, we are a licensed nursing home. Uh, we have two hundred and fifty-four licensed beds. Uh, we have, uh, several services within, but the facility have long-term care and we also have, uh, short-term rehabilitation.
What page are you on?
Uh, just, on page, either first page.
First page.
Let's take it.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see what's bigger than that.
And, uh, we are, uh, we're about two hundred and fifty-four long-term care, uh, altogether, and out that, twenty-two are short-term rehab and two thirty-two are long-term care.
Two thirty?
Two hundred and thirty-two are long, are long-term care. And twenty-two are short? Twenty-two are short-term rehab, yes.
Okay.
And, uh, we're running about ninety-plus percent occupancy. We've not been below ninety percent for the last year and a half, almost two years.
Is that the long-term care?
Everything.
Long, the long-term cares.
Uh, short-term rehab is coming up. Uh, we were at, uh, ninety, approximately ninety percent this past week. Uh, all of the beds are occupied, which is, uh, which is great. Now, of course, we have five discharges occurring today, and that's, that's what happens. Admins come in quickly, they discharge with you as well, so, which is a good thing. Um, we also provide services to the mental health center, uh, to the youth center, uh, to Douglas County Corrections. Uh, the county attorney is a, is a big user of our, our morgue, of course. Uh, we provide services to primary and healthcare clinic and other county departments. Um, we also, at, at the bottom of that page, shows our mission statement and what our vision is, uh, for the facility. If you wish, you could, we actually can do that. Mission statement is to provide health care services in an environment that promotes quality of life while meeting the unique needs of the special population to be served. And the vision is to continually enhance quality of life by supporting a well-maintained, efficient, modern, home-like health care environment which provides services that are valued by the community service. And just to share with you as well, kind of excitement, is that, uh, there's, there's really no one else in town that cares what type of people we care for. Uh, we found out when they came, they came and did their analysis of us back about, what four years ago. Uh, and also, the other point is that, uh, if you weren't there, the facility would not take the rest that we have. Uh, if they wanted them, they would accept them before we did, so, uh, just share that with you. Uh, the next page. Over the last three years, last three years, uh, the investments or subsidy that we've received in long-term care has been about four point nine million dollars per year. Uh, CMHC's been about five million dollars. Uh, primary healthcare, about seven, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And other, which are the corrections, coroner, et cetera, about one million dollars.
What does this represent? Income, grant, spending?
This would be income, money that came in to subsidize our facility.
Property taxes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, property taxes. Okay, well, that makes a lot more.
Jim, can you explain the one, the one million again? I mean, I've heard it, but the other one million?
That's for services we provide, like, uh, makes up the shortfall of what we charge versus what our costs are. Like, the youth center meals, they don't pay us what our actual.
Okay, this is like meals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I mean, meals, so it's meals?
Medications we provide to them.
Okay.
Uh, they are getting their medications for Medicaid through a different source, and we are providing the medications to them that we don't have any reimbursement for.
Okay.
Okay, I'm confused with this now. I thought this was, uh, this was a cost. The health center, uh, is four point nine million. I don't get this. Three-year average.
That's what we give through property taxes.
But it's cost over fees, so this is where does the property tax money go?
Where it goes?
Where it goes.
Okay, so this is property taxes. I don't understand, why is it property taxes?
Because our costs, you got the tax, the tax will subsidize, invest in the health center to make up the shortfall of costs.
Okay, well, the reason, the way I'm looking at this is that property taxes are funding eleven point six million dollars of the operation out there. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, then what's this about getting, getting medications or something that the?
Well, no, that's, that's why I asked, that's the one million that they had. And I, I've heard it before, but basically, I'm just saying that's.
Is that they're receiving?
No, they're, they're providing.
Most of that is food, most of that is meals for the health center or for the youth center?
Is this, is this income?
Yeah, this is the discussion we always have about their true costs.
This is, if we allocate costs to all of the services that the health center provides, this is where the dollars end up.
Go.
Go, exactly.
Okay, so this is not Douglas County Health Center income? This is what you're spending?
This is.
From property taxes.
Sorry, I'm a little literal, so I can't get this really easy. This is spending. Not a revenue.
It is that, that the tax, that we get tax money for.
This is what the county is subsidizing above the revenues that they receive?
That's the shortfall.
Okay, then I don't understand this bottom one, this one point, this million dollars that you're paying out. I thought this was all money coming in.
There's, there's stuff that gets allocated to those meals, such as dietary time to.
Okay, let me ask the direct question. Are you getting eleven point six million dollars from property taxes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what this is all about. This is income, this is a property tax subsidy that you're getting.
Correct.
Okay, so forget about what you said about meals, I don't understand that at all. This is income to you.
Yes.
It's property taxes. Okay, got it. What, what they tried to do is take the central health center and allocate it, kinda like, cost it out and say, on a, if you did a, a costing model of it, this much is of taxpayer dollars is being used to support the health center, this much community mental health, this much, uh, the primary, and this is their attempt at kinda drilling down and allocating it. Okay, so three-year average, uh, three-year average is, I guess, what you're getting over the three-year period, this is average income that you're getting. And then you tried to show where it's going.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you. If you have any questions? Well, I, it's just, publish it.
And we refer to it as property taxes, actually a combination of encourage and tax. It's important just to say county revenue.
Okay.
And next page, if you will, please. Sorry. Uh, another time, um, of the, our top, top three goals we have of our five goals, five goals and objectives for the health center. Uh, the overall goal, of course, is to assist the county in meeting the needs of its constituents, which are the taxpayers, uh, within the parameters of our mission statement and the cost effective manner. Uh, the first thing we want is finish implementation this year is our electronic health care project. Uh, it's working, it's coming along very well. Uh, we should be going live in probably October on that, uh, if not before. And that's one of our prime objectives, of course, is to make, make that operational and to, uh, realize the, uh, the efficiencies that we're projecting there, not having to enter data twice to be transferable and shared with other, uh, other users within the facility. Um, it'll also increase our bill, our collection times and increase our billing, our reimbursement, and also it should reduce and streamline our workforce. Wait, or, oh, excuse me. Um, the second one is also we want to continue to refine and work on our short-term rehab to make that more profitable than, uh, it is presently. Uh, the average revenue for short-term rehab resident in the facility per day is of four hundred and fifty dollars per day. Uh, long-term care, the average revenue for long-term care patients in short, in long-term care is about two hundred dollars per day.
And what's the source of that revenue?
That would be Medicare for short-term rehab or commercial insurance, uh, four fifty, and on the two hundred would be primarily Medicare. And some Medicare, but primarily Medicare.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the, um, the short-term rehab is really a unique, a unique entity. It does help us to fill all of our beds, all of our beds in the facility, generates revenue at maximum capacity. And also, uh, it helps us have residents who, after they're through the short-term rehab, if they find out they can't go home and be, uh, have their needs met at home with a support system such as their family or with a, uh, a home health agency, then they do apply for admission into the long-term care facility. So we can fill our beds in long-term care by discharges from the short-term rehab, and so it's a, a great, a great asset that way.
How often does that happen?
How often does that happen? That happens quite frequently. We have about three of them right now in short-term rehab that are waiting for long-term care placement.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get a bed open, they'll, they'll be transferring from short-term to long-term care. We try not to do that, but in such situations, it's, it's, sometimes you have to do that. We wanna have the beds open so we can admit short-term rehab.
So you're saying you're, I'm sorry, you're keeping those, what was that, you said again?
There are three, three patients in short-term rehab that are waiting for a long-term care bed in our.
What is it you don't wanna do?
We don't wanna, we don't wanna plug up our short-term rehab beds with a person who's there for a longer stay.
Uh-huh.
We wanna have those beds available so we can go ahead and admit more short-term rehab because it generates more.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, we are going to be reviewing our staffing patterns, so see if possibly we can make some changes in that regard. Uh, one of the things we're looking at is possibly twelve-hour shifts, PRMs. Uh, the other thing we're trying to do is to make sure that we don't have a shift change at three o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, that's when we get the majority of our admins from, from the hospitals. And if we have a shift change and staff's going off and staff is coming on, uh, they're doing reporting things, then it, it makes difficulty in, in the transition. So we're trying to make sure that we stagger those shift times so that we have maximum number of staff there when we need them. And that's usually when the, when the admins come.
Did we talk to the union about this?
Not yet, not yet.
Boy, I'll tell you, that's a big deal. So be sure you do.
Quickly.
Quickly.
You bet.
Now, can I ask you also staffing patterns and so forth? Uh, what is the cost of, uh, the temporary employees that you hire? I know it's a pretty big item.
I think DeeDee's got that.
I guess I could wait. That's why I gotta come.
Glad you asked.
And the whole facility for two thousand and fifteen.
What page are you on?
Um, this is just the non-employment. It's not, it's not a new addition. For the whole facility in two thousand and fifteen, temporary staffing was five hundred and forty-three thousand through March.
Okay, through March. Is that annual?
We were three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
I'm sorry, is that, five forty-three is annual?
Yes.
And that's for everything?
Uh-huh.
That's for short-term also?
That's for everything.
Okay.
Um, it's three sixty-five, three hundred and sixty-five thousand through March of this year.
Okay.
We were budgeted for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Okay, from, through March, when, whom is the first month, July?
Uh-huh. And then.
July, March, okay.
In the budget, there's two hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Two hundred and ninety-two thousand?
Fifty-two, so.
Okay, how does that work if you've got, you're spending five hundred and forty-three thousand, your budget two ninety-two?
At this time, we are asking that she gets to hire. We have some open positions. If they can hire, then it wouldn't come out of that budget, it would come out of the, the actual employee's budget. Of course, we would rather have employees than agency staff.
Okay, so you're gonna try to, try to convert, uh, that, uh, agency stuff into full-time people?
Um, some of them would be full-time, part-time, but into actual employees.
So DeeDee, what's your number, five forty-three or two something?
Um, five forty-three is what we spent in two thousand and fifteen. We're budgeted right now for two ninety-two.
And sixteen?
And seventeen. Sixteen, seventeen.
Okay.
Have you tried this before?
Um, we look at it every year and, and try and, try and get that number done as much as we can. So, yeah, and we just continue to look at it. Last year, I think that it's some of the nurses that were visiting was shortage for a while, which caused her number to go up, so we're hopeful that she can go ahead and hire this year, you know, and get that done, and then we'll decrease that number.
Still a pretty tough market.
Yeah, it's, it's very tough.
On nurses, it's, it's really tough.
But we're hoping, we've heard, we're hoping with things like the twelve-hour shifts, et cetera, that would attract more people. Um, a lot, a lot of people do use it for long shifts.
Okay.
Thank you. On the next page, um, just continuing to go through the, uh, top three goals, um, we're, we're also looking at generating additional revenue. Uh, we're looking at outpatient physical therapy, uh, outpatient occupational therapy and speech therapy. And this would be for therapy on the people that we have discharged out of either long-term care or out of our short-term rehab, and if they would come back to us and have therapy provided by us in-house rather than going to a different therapy provider, and then we would capture the Medicare reimbursement for that therapy. It should be a minimal investment. We got an estimate from Jeff McGill about fifty thousand dollars stream model, the, the empty space we have in the building. Um, the company that provides our PTO, T and speech, we already have a contract with them, and they're already providing services in-house for our long-term care and our short-term rehab patients. Um, this would help get increased referrals that we get to our facility, uh, both for long-term care and, of course, generate additional revenue for, for a short, through short-term rehab. Uh, we're also looking at possibly, um, operating community pharmacy, which would be a pharmacy that we would have from our building where we'd provide the medications and re, and bill the third-party payers for their, for those meds. That would be for the patients that we discharge, uh, the short-term rehab, could come to us and get their medications filled in our pharmacy.
Do they do that now?
We don't do that now. That's something we're, we're looking at to see if it's feasible or not, so, but we don't do that now. And then also, three other ideas we have is, uh, we're looking at hospice. Uh, I have spoken with the, an RN who's a director of a hospice agency, and she says very, it's a great idea to do it. Uh, that way, if they, if a resident is to, um, have home care and hospice services, he can get that from us. They have that choice, of course, but hopefully they would choose us to provide that service to them, and that would generate additional revenue for us as well. Uh, two other ideas that we have is have a dialysis unit in the facility, uh, and also to do infusion. Right now, we transfer our resident out to other, uh, med hospitals or other agencies for their dialysis. Uh, one, one we're having, one is having dialysis three times a week. Um, and then also, another idea we have is to do infusion, so that is a, uh, outpatient procedure, as is the hospice and the dialysis. Um, and that would be just where they can, if you get their pain, injections right there at our pharmacy, you can administer those through the IV, but that's something that we're constantly doing as well, so.
Do you see? Isn't dialysis right there on about forty or a little more?
Yes, it is. There's one there, and then there's, uh, there's one on Center Street as well.
Okay. I just saw it, in case there's any merit in partnership. It would be beneficial. I know you'll be doing that.
Uh, we have been approached once before by a company, uh, but they were not here at Omaha, and I wish they wanted to come in and partner with us.
Okay, 'cause they're so close.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do you have the staff to, uh, to populate hospice dialysis?
Hospice, we have to have a separate staff for that, that we don't have to step on, on the payroll because we, we didn't, we don't need them in long-term care, but hospice would be additional staff to care. The regulations state that if you're gonna have a hospice agency, you cannot share staff with long-term care or with short-term rehab. They have to be a separate and distinct staff for that, for that service. I don't have any numbers yet to tell you how many employees and things like that, but...
And you have the equipment for dialysis or do that?
We do not, we do not.
You know, and the thing that I get concerned about is that, you know, we're, your competition is just looming, I mean, Madonna, for example, for example, and also, uh, there's somebody well-known operations out there doing things, and I just, um, you know, I don't know whether, well, I just get concerned about that, the, the competition, competition. Chris?
You know, and I would say that, I don't think it's a bad deal. I mean, is it safe to say that the, I mean, the healthcare market is so Wild Wild West out there that you gotta get in? And I don't think with the, the clientele that we serve, people are getting old every day, it's, it's a gap out there. I mean, you might as well take advantage of the gap. Let me ask you this, you saying, or you, you think it would assist with short and long-term care because it would create a stronger continuum, that if you come to short-term care, then you can automatically just go to therapy? Is that why you're saying it?
Sure.
Okay.
And also, some of the people will have therapy before they go and have surgery, so they would do the pre-therapy there, and then go have their surgery, and then they would come back after.
For short-term?
Uh-huh.
And there's a lot of people in, there's people in our neighborhood that have been in our facility, uh, for short-term rehab, and they could then come back and have the, the continuing therapy after their discharge.
Well, let me ask you this, what, what parking changes you're gonna have to make once traffic starts increasing when you start adding? I mean, so what we do about that?
We, we, we shouldn't have a problem with it for the, for the outpatient therapy. Uh, it's going to be in a vacant area, that's where the, uh, uh, veteran service office used to be down on the ground floor.
Okay.
And by basement cabin, they already have a handicap ramp built to the door.
Okay.
So it.
So park is gonna be up on the other side over there?
Yep.
Okay.
That's on the east side, right between us and Gilville.
It's right on the grass out front there.
Okay, the next page, if you will, please. In your handout, you do have a copy of our mission statement or close organization chart, and if you have any questions about that, you can answer them, please.
Let's move on to the next one?
No. And, uh, the next page after that is, um... The sources of the, our department funds is, and this is what DeeDee was talking about before. Are we there? I lost you.
I, I can't see that far. Just kidding.
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
You're one page ahead of her.
Okay. Are we on the office department?
Yes, that's where we are.
So we're not gonna get to the other.
Correct.
Unless there's questions. If questions, we can, this is an interesting question. And so what do we have? It'd be the source of department funds.
Source of department.
One back.
One back.
My order, apologies for that.
Okay, so what's next?
Office department budget.
Office department budget. And in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, we had three hundred and sixty-nine full-time building employees on our payroll. Uh, this current year, we have three ninety, and we're predicting for sixteen, seventeen, then we would have three hundred and eighty-six. That's what we're asking for, for the number to be budgeted for. Uh, expenses for fourteen fifteen was thirty-six point five million dollars. Uh, fifteen, sixteen was forty million dollars, and, uh, the sixteen, seventeen we're projecting will be forty point five million dollars.
I have a couple of questions, Jim.
Sure.
Can you tell me, first of all, can you break out? And I asked it the other day and it didn't come back, but what I was looking for. I was looking for the head count of employees, let's just go with the requested budget, three eighty-six. Okay, so how many are in long-term and how many in short-term, and how many are other places? I mean, are you including the food service people and everything in here?
I think the question that was, was asked was nursing employees, I think you were asking.
Right, that's what I asked.
But we're, we're including everyone in this.
Okay, well, that's what happened in my answer to it, included everybody and I wasn't after that. What I'm really after is this, what is the ratio of employees to patients in each of the categories, in long-term, short-term rehab? I'm forgetting the fitching personnel, yes, and all that sort of thing, but I'm looking at the people who are serving the people directly. How many people do you have who are taking care of long-term residents? How many short-term? And because I'd like to know what, what it's costing per person.
You want just direct care staff?
Pardon me?
Just direct care staff?
Absolutely, yeah. And the other thing too is that, on the expenses, I'd like it to include an item that shows payroll expense, I guess that would be that. But when you have expenses, they're forty point five million, um, I know that's not for employees only.
Um, Joe, Joe had it on his handout, um, the twenty-five million, and, um, I forgot that.
And I don't need this answer right this minute, it's a little more complicated, but I would like to be able to see, you know, what's it costing per long-term resident? What about per short-term rehab? And, um, and we'll just leave hospit, hospice and all the other stuff out, leave them alone 'cause you don't have any employees there, right? Okay. Thank God, DeeDee, that's kinda tough because you say direct costs, but you have security,
Okay, thank God, Dee, that's kind of tough because you say direct costs, but you have security, food people, all that. So I'm not sure, but you'd be sure maybe later as you're putting it together to talk to Mike and put it together.
And that'd be, I mean, I, I exactly agree with what you're saying and I think that's part of the operations that I'm looking at. What is it for, you know, the nurses and all those people, that's free, and then the rest of it I know is part of the deal. Okay, thanks Dee.
So basically, when you look at the budget here, expenses in the whole thing, I'm thinking you bet yourself watching, expenses are one and a half percent roughly, or one and a quarter percent.
We met the target that Joe gave us.
Yeah. I mean, really, if we have expenses only up one and a quarter, so what if Joe would've said, you know, maybe we should go down three percent?
We're pretty lean.
I know. You've done great.
We would've. Put the foot down, no.
Chris.
So, Dee, I'm just wondering, do we ever, I can't remember, did we ever have closure with this PBX thing, revenue odds, like city pay, what?
That is still in the court system.
Like, we sued somebody?
No, they sued us.
Who sued us?
What are we talking about? Oh, you're located.
Oh, so the issue is the, okay, okay, but I'm just wondering, like, source of pay? City's not paying anything on that either?
Not right now.
But I can tell you, you know, as we go.
Are they still benefiting from?
They say they don't need anymore and as everybody goes to this next generation, voice-over IP, the, the whole PBX-centric system even becomes more antiquated than it is now. This new phone system that we're bringing in, that's tied into the computers and the internet, I mean, it's just gonna make it no reason to exist.
So from then, it'll just be a reduction of?
I've got some two cents to add to that, does anybody do any business with First National Bank? If I dial, if I dial right now, a human answers the phone quickly. And I say to them, I need to talk to somebody in business banking because I can't get into my site, just moment please, bank, and I'm connected soon. I just totally disagree, you know, and nothing against the Health Department, but when you call the Health Department, you get this litany of, you know, do you have a dog bite you want to report? Do you have a rat in your backyard, you know, pest or something, all this kind of other stuff. I mean, I love the Health Department. But your phone system makes me buzz. Anyway.
That's why we do it.
I know. Trying to get me into serious. But seriously, I, I really think we have to be rethinking this and also the whole voiceover, whatever it's called, I mean, there's, there are better ways to do this and I keep harping on what I do. When someone calls the switchboard at the county board, if they want to talk to me, they transfer it to my personal cell phone, I paid for this. And it comes up, interesting enough, taxpayer. So I know that it's somebody, either from the office or someone who wants to say something. And I answer it, I return the calls, those are stuff, I don't have a phone in my office and I don't have one of my, I don't have a landline at home. I don't have a phone in my office at the courthouse or whatever it's called, or it's in this building. And I think that's where we need to move, we need to get away from these phones in the offices, they're calling a main number for the Health Department and someone says, here's this caller, I have to pay. I'm sorry.
We're saved by the.
Says to bring milk and bread.
Well, I think we can move on. You're done, get out of here, what are you here? You've got a break. Joe, I think you led off by saying this is the largest cost center in Douglas County.
Yeah.
Is it the largest revenue center in Douglas County as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the numbers that you laid out for us initially were forty-six point nine for the, for the most recent fiscal year budgeted with revenues of thirty-two point five. And I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile that with the numbers that we see in here, which are expenses of, I think, forty point oh. That difference between the forty point oh for fifteen sixteen here and the forty-six point nine for fifteen sixteen that we talked about, I'm sure there's a good explanation, but I'm.
Yeah.
Would you include CMHC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw CMHC, I'm sorry. She, CMHC is not in her, this number, right?
No.
Oh, I see, okay, so that's the six million for the mental health center as well.
We wouldn't be grudgingly sharing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like I said, I'm sure there was a good explanation. So when we talk about the largest cost center for Douglas County, wouldn't that be the Douglas County Correctional Center if you net it out?
On a net basis, but I, I always look at it on a gross basis because those are actual expenses.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, but I understand your point, yes.
So when we're talking about, you know, property tax dollars, all-in for a property tax dollar investment in a county department, that would far and away be the Douglas County Correctional Center. This is actually all-in a fairly healthy revenue center for Douglas County.
Well, what, I think they've, ever since the HMA study, whenever that was, four, five years ago, I think that gave them a nice framework on how to manage their operation and I think they've consistently been able to maintain it in that twelve to thirteen million dollars of taxpayer support, which has been a challenge in this environment and so I do give them credit for that and that, this is not an area where costs are, you know, net taxpayer support has been increasing. It's been relatively steady in that twelve to thirteen million dollar range for the past four, five years.
And just to give us a comparison and take that out, and I don't expect you to have these at your fingertips, but could you ballpark what that property tax investment in the Douglas County Correctional Center?
Sure.
Is, while you're, you're getting that, over that period of time that Joe was referencing, we have actually grown revenues for the Douglas County Health Center, is that right? And one of the main drivers of that has been the additional of the short-term rehab capacity.
Right.
So how long has that been up and running, the short-term rehab?
About, about two years.
Two years?
Yes.
And its revenue generating capacity now is what, I mean, you probably have it in here, but I'm.
I, I budgeted about three million, we're just at.
Okay, so that's a three million contribution to that thirty-two point five million overall revenue contribution to Douglas County. We're also, I think, Commissioner Duda can probably address this better than me, engaged in outreach to the public health partners that we have on Forty-Second Street. VA and UNMC. Could you just give us a kind of an overview of where we are with our collaborative efforts with the public health entities that are our neighbors?
We, we are receiving our, the most referrals in our monthly statistics that we receive are from the UNMC. Second would probably be the Vets, second in theory would be the Methodist Vets, those areas. We continue to collaborate with them, where they, they provided a radiology professional. He provided specifications for our X-ray machines that we, we ended up probably go up for bid on, he is a radiation physicist, actually Dr. Thomas Lane. So that, and that was at no cost. They have, they're going to be sending us this patient that, that's been cared for the same diagnosis that we've cared for for other, for other residents that have the same diagnosis, it's not a problem for us. And that's, we're in negotiations and discussions with them about that. The VA continue to work with them as well and it's a great collaborative, they, they appreciate what we do and we have a great dialogue with them. If we have a problem with any particular resident at all, we can contact them and they'll, they'll investigate and help us with that. They're very supportive of us when we have an issue with a medication that we don't have in stock, we can contact the VA pharmacy and they generally have it and we get it from them and then replace it once we get, get our stock in. So it's a, it's a great collaborative, there's something on the horizon where there could possibly be, we all know this with the, the shared utilities between the Med Center and the VA. And we might be able to get back off that line as well for minimal cost and we could then realize, hopefully get utilities at less, less expensive rate. Or we can also then sell back or provide back student utilities back to them as well, so it could be a win-win for both, so that's, that's kind of an exciting opportunity as well.
I know in recent trustee meetings, we've inquired and you've provided us with information relative to our occupancy rate, which is in the ninetieth percentile, and the average of healthcare centers in the metro and state area, which is what?
We're, we're in the nineties and there's others that are in the seventies or eighty, eighty percent, eighty-five percent. And it's really kind of unheard of that facilities have the occupancy that we have and that's because we provide the services needed in the community. And I, I see the need for our services only going to increase as people, as they do with age. And there's people from the rural areas moving into the metro areas to access services, which we see already. So and that's, matter of fact, we experienced that in North Dakota when I was out there in the heaties, the out-migration from rural areas to the metro areas where they could access services.
And I've reached out to Nebraska Hospital Association as well and it turns out that we lead the state in occupancy rates for health centers at ninety percent. Finally, don't we have a five-star accreditation?
We do.
Right?
And we've had that since December of two thousand and eight when they first came out with the, with that five-star group, we've maintained it every single month since then.
Which is the highest rating available.
And we're the only ones to maintain that five-star in the community, we're the only ones.
The CMS is adjusting the requirements for five-star rating and they're going to be stiffer to achieve because people were gradually becoming five-star and so now they're going to ratchet things down, make it more difficult for pursuit of the five-star rating.
Right, so you're generating tens of millions of dollars in revenue, you're maintaining the highest occupancy rate of any health center in the state and you've maintained a five-star rating longer than I think anybody else around, good job. Joe, did you?
Twenty million.
Okay, so in addition to you being the largest revenue center, the flip side of that is our largest cost center is the Douglas County Correctional.
In terms of net taxpayer contribution.
Twenty million, okay.
If I might add, I just want to share something with you as well, we have switched from tray line dining, which is where we have staff standing around those conveyor belts and they've set the trays up with the entrees that the residents wanted or that they are, is in keeping with their diets. And we've gone to the face style dining or family-style dining and Douglas County Health Center Foundation bought all of the equipment, they raised funds for that. Came to probably about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the equipment for those neighborhoods and so all of our meals are being served buffet style. The residents get choices as to what they want and it's, they really do appreciate it, they're, they're receiving great, great meal service now. And the other thing that's kind of interesting, the food that is on the steam cart, as long as we maintain the temperatures at, at the required temps, we can then take that food and take it back and we can use it for something the next day and we, and right now we're making vegetable or homemade soup with, with the leftovers and the residents love the.
Minced ham stew.
Just kidding.
Mystery soup.
It's a way to reduce food waste, reduce, reduce, and the residents really appreciate the quality of the meal they receive, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary, Mary Ann?
Well, I just want to make a couple of points of what I think Joe was trying to point out was, and we all support the health center, it was, that's why we still have it. But it was one of those services that isn't necessarily mandated for us to do, so it becomes the bigger cost driver of property tax dollars that is supporting kind of a non-mandated type service. But one of the things through the HMA was that as the revenues would grow, those revenues would offset the cost of the property tax subsidy that you're getting in the facility. And that hasn't necessarily occurred.
Not yet.
And so what I think would be beneficial is to see if we could maybe map out when we could potentially start seeing, we're getting these increased revenues, which that was why short-term rehab became into existence, was we see these increases in revenues that we are able then to decrease the reliance on our property taxes. And so if there's a chart or a projection or a goal that we could reach for, that was really kind of the outcome of what the recommendations were of implementing all these things from HMA.
The way that it's budgeted right now, it will cover its direct costs and so it will start going back and helping pay some of those support services where in the past we were not able to do that. Assist living was not able to help pay for housekeeping and security, the indirect costs, so we will now start being able to do that if we can maintain the occupancy that we're seeing right now. Then we'll be, we will start paying that back, so we can look at it and put together.
I had a, I had a question I wanted to ask about, anyone else have a question right now? I had a question about, you mentioned earlier about, you take people that others won't. Without getting too specific, who are those people, what's their condition?
There would be people that have psychiatric diagnosis, they are difficult to manage type residents. They're a younger population, the average age of our residents in our facility is about sixty-six, sixty-seven. We care for more male residents than we do care for females and that's just the inverse of what other someone's care for, they don't care for a lot, people with behavioral issues. Like we do, they may take care of Alzheimer's, they may take care of dementia, but they don't take ones that have schizophrenia, things like that, that are more severe.
Well, you know, what this leads me to is that it seems like that would be a big contributor to the ninety percent occupancy they have because those people can't go anywhere else. So the only place in town or the region that offers that service, so maybe that's why you're at ninety percent and the others are seventy, because they don't take patients that you do.
And, and we can't even get patients ours, we can't manage into a regional center.
Right, I guess what I'm saying though is that, and not to be a total jerk about it, but I think the ninety percent is the reason it's that high is because you're taking these people that they can't go anywhere else. So you're the only place in town that takes them, so that's why your percentage is that, just in all, in all fairness, disclosures. Okay.
Some of that, some of that is, my, Commissioner Boyle, is because there isn't a mandate through the state that says a facility has to take a certain percentage of Medicaid patients. And so, and this is from personal experience where your family member reaches and all their assets are gone and they have to go then into the process of getting applied for and become eligible for Medicaid, but that facility that they're in doesn't take Medicaid and doesn't want to take Medicaid. And so now there's no place else for that person to go. And so to your point, that's why those people then are brought to or go through our process of becoming in our facility. Not that, no, no facility, they're, they take Medicaid, but a very small amount and so your people are, your relatives, your loved ones are moved around to a facility that will accept it, so.
By state rec, you have to have ten percent of your license beds certified for Medicaid, so in the four-profit facilities, they may have a hundred beds, ninety of them are all private paid.
Right.
The other ten are for Medicaid. They don't admit from the outside usually, they usually have, say, the people who have invested themselves with the resources while they've been in that facility's care and they have to go on Medicaid, they would then hold those ten beds for them to move into, but they still do not admit from the outside.
Right, but when those are full, they don't have to convert one of their other beds.
They do not.
They then start looking for outside.
Then they, then they ultimately discharge.
Right, which is, right, happened twice, I know, yep.
Yeah, you have a question?
Yes, we were concerned about this page, additional revenue projects, how that would compete with the private sector.
And. They save money by not numbering them, so we have to guess what.
Additional revenue projects.
Dee, Dee is used to that.
I wonder if your facility, you could make a list, a list of all your mandated services or your non-mandated services on it, because we spoke with the HMA people and they were doing the study and they, one of the recommendations they made is to, to do that. So you wouldn't be competing with the private sector and that's where you could cut down some of your expenses. So do you, do you have a list of non-mandated and mandated services, separate lists?
Our services are all non-mandated except for CMHC.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
They're non, all, the health center is non-mandated.
Non-mandated, total center is non-mandated.
Okay.
But it's like a lot of other things in the government, like diversion at corrections and so forth, there are things that we observe that need to be done. And so we either turn our backs on people and say, we're not, we don't do windows, or else we step up and fulfill our obligations, provide services that are needed in the community. And that includes diversion, includes the things they're doing, that's, it's a hard pill to swallow, but it, and it isn't mandated.
Well, certainly you don't want to throw people out in the street and I know from my work experience, other institutions don't like to take Medicaid people especially.
Right.
But I, from reviewing the HMA study, it seemed that they, one of their points was to try to reduce the expenses.
Absolutely.
And not compete with the private sector.
But that's not ideal and sometimes when the private sector doesn't step up, government has to, I think. Mr. Cavanagh is next.
Thanks, Doug, I think, you know, you're making some valid points and based on the study, I understand that that was a goal. My question to Joe relative to the contribution that we're making from our property tax pot to different departments, larger departments inside of Douglas County, goes to the same question and Mike indicated, we're doing stuff that's not mandated on a lot of different fronts. Simply because if we don't do it, nobody else does, so over in corrections, we have today and always a substantial number of non-Douglas County, non-mandated residents of our correctional center, we're not obligated to take those people and yet we do. And so I think that your question is on point, but it should be, I think, wider in application when you're inquiring about this. Make that inquiry to all the departments that come before us and I think that you'll find that there are large swaths of what we do, as Mike indicated, that fall into that category that you, that you just raised and you're exactly right. One of the reasons that we end up with such a high Medicaid population is private entities won't take them, yeah.
Doesn't get enough reimbursement for it, doesn't cover their costs.
But they get a lot of tax reimbursement because they don't pay any property taxes.
They, they have community benefit.
Really interesting.
Well, not the for-profit facilities, you have some long-term care facilities that are for-profit.
Right. But you think maybe some of the hospitals could step up. Get, get them on the phone.
Mary Ann, did you have a comment? Anybody else want to speak to you?
All right, good job. You do a nice, good answering job, you always answer our questions and you send me other information. Appreciate the good work you did.
And you have to tell us why you want to go to the organization.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
I told Dee she couldn't go anywhere, I might be numbers help, so she's not allowed, so she's not able to be in the chair. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'll just, if she eats me off, I can, oh, she knocked me, okay. All right, so communal health center, we will start off with our mission, which is page two, and that is caring for the underserved of Douglas County. I apologize, the page number was a little small, so apologize in advance for that. The, we'll next move on. The, we'll next move on to our top five goals and objectives, and this really truly is kind of our dream state, things that we were, we think that would really help us at the Community Mental Health Center. One of the things that we really want to focus on is continuing to maximize our revenue, which we've tried very hard over the last four years to do. We think that if we were able to hire a fiscal and a contract director, that would be one position, that we're going to be able to continue to increase our revenue. We believe that we can do that through potential private insurance contracts, so, continuing providing outpatient services for individuals with United Healthcare, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and things like that would bring in additional revenue. Help us secure additional grants, we've done that throughout the last few years as well to help bring in additional revenue. Be a liaison with our current, the health center fiscal department, and we think that's going to help us again increase our revenue, make sure that we're billing things appropriately, using appropriate CPT coding, so we can assure that we're bringing in maximum billable units. Over, just on a note, in the last probably three years, we've increased our Region Six contract, and that's expanded to eleven billable programs now, which has doubled the programming through Region Six, without any additional administrative assistance. We've also secured the intensive outpatient program, which is a program that we do with corrections, and the R and R program, which is a program that we do with corrections, and the intensive case management program, which is with corrections as well on that side of the Region Six. And this year, we added doing substance abuse evaluations for corrections, and that's funded through Region Six as well. The other thing that we want to look at is the development of a psychiatric emergency room, and to be able to really do that and do it well, we think that we would need an additional person on board to do that. There's also becoming panel for Iowa Medicaid as well, especially in our psychiatric inpatient unit, who will get individuals admitted, and they have, we find out they have Iowa Medicaid, and we can't currently bill Iowa Medicaid. So, that is our first goal. Moving on to our second goal, we'd like to fulfill the implementation of the MTN model of open access and just-in-time scheduling to the psychiatric outpatient clinic. Increase exposure at the Board of, Board of Trustees meeting, Region Six pay for a consultant for the outpatient clinic, and we've been through that process, and the real, the focus on that is making sure people who are in need of outpatient medication management and therapy get the most timely access into services that they can get for that first appointment, instead of waiting three to six weeks. So, if they're leaving a psychiatric hospital, they can get in within probably twenty-four to forty-eight hours instead. Through the consulting process, MTN has stated, we, the Community Mental Health Center, really to do this well, needs to hire two full-time triage therapists. And we approached the Board, probably about two months ago, the Board of Trustees, and asked if we could put in an application to the Behavioral Health Support Foundation to pilot this project, and we found out last night that that is looking very positive. They want to do that. They have a few additional questions that they want, want us to answer before, they're ready to sign on, but it looks very positive that they are going to fund that. I have the two positions in our budget, didn't include additional revenue, but, once we get the go-ahead from the Behavioral Support Foundation, then that will increase our revenue as well, to about a hundred and fifty additional thousand dollars. And then, we think that it's very important for Douglas County to consider application for the psychiatric emergency room that's going to be coming to the region. We believe very strongly serving the indigent and the underserved is a county responsibility, and the psychiatric ED is exactly that. There's a huge gap in our community where people are being left in emergency rooms or without a place to go to because of the psychiatric illness, and there's, and this is a very important symptom, and the psychiatric ED is going to be a model that we think is going to help fill that gap. So Marty and Dr. Kowalski are going to Oakland to see the, the program that Commissioner Borgeson saw, we leave tomorrow morning, so we're very excited to, to go and see that as well. And then, goal number four, continue to enhance services between the Community Mental Health Center and Douglas County Corrections. This, I believe, historically has been an underserved area within the county, and really bringing our two departments together, I think, has been, has been a blessing for both programs, to be really honest. I think it, it, you may, we may not be able to see the direct savings to the taxpayer, but we can see it in, Mike has a story that I got last night, and it makes me emotional to even think about the story, so he's going to read it, so I'm crying.
So I guess this is a reminder of, I mean, this is a money meeting, but a reminder of why we do the money meetings. And this comes from our intensive outpatient program that the Second Chance Act, the Bureau of Justice is, is funding for us at the moment. And so, this, Joey was referred to the intensive outpatient program through the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center in July of 2015. At the time, she was homeless, facing her sixth shoplifting charge, and hadn't seen her fourteen-year-old daughter in almost two years. She spent the prior two years struggling through drug abuse and boosting so that she could afford to use ICE, her drug of choice. Jo- Joey had tearfully told her story to the IOP group, and over the months, it started to become one of hope instead of loss. She graduated from IOP and moved into permanent supportive housing through the Stevens Center, where she is now has the position on the Lieutenant Advisory Board. She became involved in the AA community and fearlessly dove headfirst into any opportunity that came her way. She has turned her life over to God and started to help other women in need. She recently was a guest speaker at the Good News Jail and Prison Ministry banquet, and she is active in the gospel community and still finds time to work the steps with her sponsor. Joey's recovery journey is far from over. She is on the waitlist for a two-bedroom apartment at the Stevens Center and hopes to share this with her daughter soon. She's getting ready to start parenting classes, because like many of us, she is nervous about, nervous about parenting a teenager. She's established a medication regime that makes her feel comfortable, and continues to receive mental health services through the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. She recognizes the necessity of having a support system and calls on hers regularly. She too has become a part of support system of other women in her community, and her story is incredible, and it offers to others an example of a remarkable recovery earned through both hard work and hope, and it's a sense of hope that Joey gives to others. And so, that is really someone who was kind of caught in that cycle of petty shoplifting and her drug abuse, and so she was in the criminal justice center and the RAP program, but had some previous contact with us, and through that linkage and connection, got referred to that intensive outpatient program that is housed within the reentry assistant programming. And so, with that, it kind of made a shift.
Mr. Campbell?
That's neat.
And Mike, thanks for that, because, you know, that's kind of the tip of the iceberg of the multiplier effect of people that we don't treat. So, that woman, instead of going back to the correctional center where we would pay X number of dollars a night to have her as a family, which would have to go someplace, and they would undoubtedly be in our juvenile justice system in someplace, all of these are add-on costs by not treating that initial problem. So, thanks for that, because I think it gives us a real idea of the ripple effect of not doing almost the preventative smart thing to do, that would save us down the line doing the, you know, basically criminal justice type of things that would, that would result from that, at great expense to us in taxpayer dollars.
Thank you very much. And then, the, the last thing is, we really want to look at some future strategic planning, and what additional services are lacking for the indigent or underserved of Douglas County. And some of those things are, are services that people cannot get into because they don't have Medicaid, Medicare, or some form of insurance. And so, it's an ACT teen service, or an ACT forensic service, DBT, which is dialectical behavioral therapy, which is a very positive therapy that's utilized, and it's an evidence-based model, and substance abuse treatment services. I really think we're behind the, behind the curveball on the amount of substance abuse treatment services that we provide, and, you know, we look at at least probably eighty percent of the clients we serve have some form of co-occurring issue, and we have one dual-credentialed therapist. So, I think that there are a lot of things that we could do in that area. We, our intensive case management program that specifically works with Douglas County Corrections was designed to work with nineteen to twenty-four-year-olds, and we would really like to expand that, and we know the need is there, to work with individuals that are twenty-four older. We can't do that based on the current service definition from Region Six, and that was based on, not on the, not on Region Sixes, but on the state said that it had to be eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. So, we'd like to expand that. We believe that in-house community support and wrapping services around individuals is something that would be very beneficial for the population that we serve as well, and then expanding our peer support services to Douglas County Corrections. We have very limited peer support staff members, we have one peer support staff member that can work in our intensive case management program funded through the region, and she will go and do a little bit of work in corrections outside of her position, and they have founded extremely beneficial corrections staff will call and say, can you send Ronnie up? We have somebody who really, really needs to see her. And so, we think that having that peer support in corrections would be beneficial to both our departments. Page six is our administrative table of organizations, so you can see kind of how things are structured. The one thing that I want to point out is, under the Director of Outpatient Services, which is Mike's position, when I started here probably about seven years ago, and feels like seventy, I've got a lot of break, my doctor told me I had a lot of break there coming in, so I needed to, so. There were two programs underneath that position, it was outpatient services and the day treatment program. So, you can see seven additional duties that have fallen underneath Mike's position. So, thank you, Mike, for putting that. And as we continue to expand things and enhance potentially our inpatient services and add a psychiatric, potentially if we could, emergency department or subacute beds, twenty-three fifty-nine, that's going to increase that work order as well, so, again, kind of trying to put enough bug for that fiscal slash contract person that I think we could really utilize. And then, our budget detail, approximately, I think Dee had eighty, eighty-eight staff members, when I did my head count yesterday, I was about at eighty-five point six, but I didn't have my glasses on, so. Maybe I, maybe I did an oops there.
Excuse me, does that eighty-five point six include the positions you're talking about?
It does not, so.
So, with that, we'll repeat.
Yeah, how many new positions are you adding?
The two, we would like the two triage therapists, which are in the budget, but we do not have the fiscal person in the budget.
So, you had a fiscal person?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the price on that, do you think?
I would think with benefits would be approximately, I have that calculation, a little over a hundred thousand.
When you say they're in the budget, do you mean that they're in, the two additional are in your budget request for?
Are in the budget request, yes.
Not in the budget.
No, no, they're in the, I'm sorry, they're in the budget request, the triage therapists are, but the fiscal person is not.
And the fiscal person is not in the budget request, but you're just saying, in the best of all worlds, this is really what we think would help us?
Yeah, correct.
Just going back to the notes that I took last year to what we're looking at, I'm trying to reconcile some numbers here, and in the fourteen-fifteen budget that we reported on last year, it was a total of six point four million dollars, which, you know, comports with what we're talking about here. And then, going forward to the, to the fifteen-sixteen budget, which we're requesting here, it's six point nine nine nine, basically seven. So, we're looking at, if I'm reading this right, like a six hundred thousand dollar bump, is that right?
Yeah, part of that was, you got that, in the supplement, we, you got some money from Region Six, how do you explain?
We have, we've received additional money from Region Six, we're going to get additional, about two hundred thousand dollars from Region Six this year, and then, we also, that's, that bump is going to include the full grant for the intensive outpatient program that's in, in down at Corrections.
So, there were revenue offsets.
There were revenue offsets.
Okay, and the second part of that, the grant?
We have an intensive outpatient program through the Bureau of Justice, and that was not in full swing last year, and it will be this year.
And how much is that?
About two hundred and fifty thousand, Mike, is that right?
With Doug coming here, that's what we're projecting, that's the whole offset.
And, and we'll have an additional two hundred thousand dollars from Region Six, probably an additional hundred and fifty from, hopefully from the Behavioral, Behavioral Health Support Foundation as well.
Okay, so, the essentially six hundred thousand that we're talking about is pretty much offset by these three categories, and that hundred and fifty thousand that you were hoping for the last one is what?
That is for the two triage therapists that MTN, the consulting organization, indicated would be beneficial for us, for the outpatient clinic.
Okay, and that's not the same as the psych ER that you were referencing?
It is not. The psychiatric emergency department is an entirely different project, and that's going to be a bidding process through Region Six Behavioral Health Care.
Okay, and that's not encompassed anywhere in this budget proposal?
It is not.
Do you have an idea of what that would entail, crosswise?
We're working on that right now with Dr. Zellers from Alameda County.
Would that be in like next year's budget then, or?
Well, it depends on how fast we can put it together and put the RFP out. We're hoping by the end of this year, we have it all put together to go out for the Pretty rambunctious, but.
Been hoping for June of two thousand and seventeen, opening, which is pretty.
Rambunctious too. But so, so just so you know, the, the region took on the effort from doing community strategic plan, that something has to give with the emergency rooms being filled, people getting put in jail instead of into a mental health facility. So, started looking at different options that maybe we thought would work best for this community, went and looked at a couple of them, the one they're going to was the one that we really liked the most, and it's a facility that is a twenty-three fifty-nine facility where everybody, doesn't matter who you are, comes through that door, and they're assessed and then seen by a psychiatrist immediately, and treatment there to follow. Now, we have looked at the space at our Community Mental Health Center as an option that, that could potentially be a place for this to, to be, but we don't know yet, because we don't have all the details yet. So, that will not, it's not in this budget, but we could be hopefully talking about it next.
Just two final things. Last year, we were anticipating that you would staff up to full four psychiatrist positions, and that's been achieved, correct?
Yes, sir.
Secondly, last year, we talked about the number of people served in the last five years, and were you able to capture a number for us? I think I referenced that, I would be coming back to this.
For the outpatient clinic, we serve approximately thirteen hundred individuals.
Per year?
Yes, per year, it's not, those are duplicate numbers though, because there's the capacities to serve thirteen hundred individuals. If you want to know exactly the number of medication management checks we do, that's going to be different.
Okay, maybe for our next trustees meeting, you could bring those, kind of the five-year window, so that we can see, you know, how we're progressing. I know that you give us an update on a regular, but I, I'm looking for an overtime thing, so that we can kind of grasp this from a strategic point of view. And, this is a collaborative effort on the, on the ER that we're doing?
Absolutely, with the community, not just with, yeah, it's all the hospitals, providers.
And I believe that there will probably be several organizations that bid for the psychiatric ED. But we are involved in every aspect of the work groups to, and now it's going to break down into subcommittees, that we're involved with as well.
The final thing is, on the budget detail page, you indicate that revenues for fourteen-fifteen were four point eight, in the, I think, last numbers that we got, there's just a little bit of discrepancy there, it was four point two. And, you know, I'm probably missing something real obvious here, but what is the, what is the difference between those numbers? Because it ratchets down, I mean, the FTEs is seventy-seven, eighty, and eighty-five, and we got eighty-eight, and then, same with the other categories. Is there something that we're missing there that's making this little discrepancy?
That's a good question. I mean, a Dee will, that's all I can say.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but if you could get back to me with a reconciliation, I'm sure that it's available.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't necessarily need for you to answer that D D.
Sherry, just say one more time, the two, on this page where you have budget detail and you have a requested budget and there's eighty-five point six, we're just going to use that number. It's eighty-five point six. That includes the two triage therapists or it doesn't include the two triage therapists that you are wanting in this year's budget?
This eighty-five would not. It's in, it's in the budget, but not in the head count. So it's, I put it in the budget, but I don't believe it's in the head count.
So in your expenses, it's there?
It is in, it is in the expenses.
But it is not in the head count?
That is correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Why don't we add it?
Because they're not higher yet.
So we add three because of the fiscal person?
If we do the, well, that's not in the budget.
You have to add that to the budget.
I would have to add that to the expenses because that hasn't been added.
I think you probably should, to get the true picture.
Then you'd have to update your numbers for us.
Yeah, not that much. Any other questions to come up? Yeah, I'd like, oh, excuse me, go ahead, Doug. Did you want to roll first?
No, you. I have three questions. The state legislature passed a law to allow Medicaid to seek additional patient reimbursement. Is there any after additional patient reimbursement?
I'm sorry, I was responding to Joe on something, my apologies.
That's okay. The legislature passed a law to allow Medicaid to seek additional patient reimbursement. Are you going after that additional patient reimbursement?
Additional pay reimbursement above and beyond what Medicaid pays us for patients?
For patients personally.
No.
If it passed the law, so you could go after more of their personal money before they are accepted into Medicaid?
I guess I'm not familiar with that with the behavioral health side versus the medical side of Medicaid. The behavioral health side is all managed through, right now through Magellan. And the, our contract with Magellan will indicate whether we can, the percentage above and beyond what we potentially could charge people with mental health issues. And that will change in two thousand and seventeen with the three new management organizations.
Doug, if I could make a personal comment, I could be wrong on this, so I know I won't be corrected. But anyway, if, it seems though, someone who is on, it seems to me, someone who's on Medicaid probably has a very, very low income stream. And so I really doubt that, while it may sound like really great public policy and let's get every nickel we can out of these people, I don't know that it's practical because I doubt they have any resources to speak to.
What they're doing is they're making more of their personal money.
Right.
They had to spend more of their personal money before they got onto Medicaid.
Oh, right, that's at the state, right.
That's a spin down.
Yeah, the spin, right.
Yeah, that's a spin down.
That's not us, that's at the state. That happens at the state.
Oh, okay, so it's not us.
Yeah.
That's an alcohol breast.
Last year, you said you were possibly going to expand your service, services to other counties? Are you still planning to do that for additional revenue?
Within our intensive case management program that is in Corrections, we do provide services to the other Washington, all Regions Six funded programs. Also, any program that we have a Regions Six contract with, we can, we can serve individuals outside of the county and get reimbursed for that, both inpatient and outpatient in therapy.
Okay. And also last year, you said that some of the state, money you gave the state was not rebated? Are you getting some of that money back?
Some of the money we gave the state.
Local money from the health center was somehow given to the state, but was not, was supposed to be rebated back to the county and it was not rebated.
I, I think that was a timing issue.
Oh. Was that, that's all I wrote down from last year.
County dollars that go to the state?
Some of this money that was supposed to be rebated back to the state county was not rebated.
That, I don't know, maybe that's when we were talking about regional dollars that the state took due to the Affordable Care Act. They took about fifteen million. They gave us back ten, they still had kept the five. And we were still working to get that back into place. We do have some additional dollars coming. We haven't been made whole yet. And then that, of course, then when you go to the next fiscal year, you're starting at a deficit, so. But no, that, that's what I think you're talking about there.
And those dollars really do go to, would go to Regions Six Behavioral Healthcare and then the organizations they contract with.
Goes to them.
Yes.
Mary Ann's going to take a bike ride to try to get that extra money.
I am, I'm going to jog there instead.
Chase him down the street. Excuse me, Doug, next question, is there another?
No, that's okay.
See who else, Mary Ann?
Well, I just wanted to generally say that Commissioner Boyle and I will be presenting here after we have our follow-up meeting. We did the stepping up initiative, which intertwined some of the services that Sherry was talking about with Corrections and we'll be presenting that to the board in a follow-up plan or a process for us to be able to attack some of these. And then as the details get a little bit firmer, because they're still getting worked out on the ER, we'll, we'll update you on, on that as well.
I wanted to ask a question about sort of like the big elephant at twenty-sixth county. What is Lasting Hope doing to contribute to the mental health of our community? Anything? No, that's not fair. How can we get the money away from them? About six million dollars?
Six point five.
They get a check, it's private, they get a check from the state, six million dollars, it was, was our money. And some political power, just kind of went in and said, we want the money, and so they got it.
I, I think very strongly that the Community Mental Health Center is a diamond in the community that not a lot of people know about.
Right.
And so we have worked very hard to, in the last several years, to be seen as truly what we are and the, the importance of the services that we provide at the Community Mental Health Center. Historically, I think in the community, sometimes we were forgotten because there are much larger organizations that can be out there doing some things that we're not doing and be at the table of things that maybe we historically were not at. And our executive team has worked very hard with Regions Six and Commissioner Boardes to make sure we are at the table at all of these meetings. Initially, when the, the work group that the Tri-West started, we weren't down as a member to be on that, to be on those groups. And, and so we got, we made sure that we were at, at the table for those things. And we were out in the community, being on, you know, being very involved and active. I think that overall is going to, to help us in the long run. I think it's going to be a long process because we're not as large an organization as some of the other, you know, CHI. And so it's hard to compete, so.
Well, for the, everybody in the room who doesn't know this, we had, and this is just one example. I don't think it's widespread, but it's one example of an attitude that needs to be discussed. There was a patient at Lasting Hope who acted out and destroyed a television monitor, small one, not one of these victims, but a small one. And the response from Lasting Hope people was to call nine-one-one. So the police came and got her and dispossessed her, that was kind of Corrections. And that's the place that we really need more mental and mentally ill people. So I'm really not much of a fan of Lasting Hope, that just indicates what they're doing. I think what we do, we need to do Marcos, and I'd like to see the county board do the tour. I think we need to take them on. I think we need to go down there, present a plan to the legislature about how we want to treat the mentally ill, fund a psych ER, do all these things, and go to the map with them. Because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They were supposed to be a one-stop service operation. We shut down our spring speed operation that as a result of no funding. And I don't know what's going on up there. I mean, I see a lot of cars in the parking lot, I drive down Harmony Street all the time. But I shouldn't make these kind of blanket statements, but we need the money. So I think we ought to go toe-to-toe, they had the free ride for far too long. And we ought to go down there and tell them, fellow listeners, that we need the money, here's what we would do with it. We would not be calling nine-one-one to come get a patient, throw them in a jail. We would not do that. So I think that's what we ought to do, seriously, talk to the Kellys. What have we got to lose? I mean, we're so loved everywhere anyway, what the hell?
Well, and that's again where the emphasis on the psych ED comes in, that facility. Because that, that is a place, even if someone is arrested. And that's, there's two, two prongs to that, that we're working on. One is, if they are arrested, they can still come to that facility and be assessed and get taken care of. And then their charge, it's just on their chart that says, charge pending. And then once they're done, they have to go over to their, take care of their charges, their criminal stuff. But at the same time, there is also an effort to, Commissioner Boyle and I talked with the paramedics from the Omaha Fire Department, and this goes along the whole lines of trying to de-stigmatize, get the stigma removed from mental illness, and also to decriminalize it. And what we talked about was, instead of law enforcement, they may take the call, but what happens today is they take the call, they handcuff the person, they put them in the back of a cruiser, and they take them to jail, ER, wherever. The, the hope is, is that we can work with them and the legislature, because some laws would have to be changed on transfer of custody, that they would maybe do a duel or if nine-one-one dispatchers are trained well enough, that they would call the paramedics. The paramedics would respond and take the person to the facility, which hopefully we will have the emergency depart, psych emergency facility. And I can tell you from listening to stories of individuals, and they could too, of individuals who have been in that predicament where they are having a psychotic episode and a law enforcement officer, not that they're trying to do anything bad, it's just it escalates that psychotic episode in them and it causes a whole lot more problems than you would if there was a medical. And we keep using the example that if you have a heart attack, you're not going to call law enforcement to handcuff you and take you to an ER or whatever facility it is that we need to be taken to. And so there are all kinds of prongs and things working, which I think will address some of what you're talking about, Commissioner Boyle.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry, you're doing a terrific job. Particularly, my point of perspective is I really, please, and very happy with your relationship with Corrections. It's unheard of.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sherry, when I do that update, when Commissioner Boyle and I do that update on stepping up, one of the things, if I have that PowerPoint where it's what you guys do with Corrections, I know that part two, and you can just tack that on to the whole presentation, and I'll let you know what date that comes up.
Okay, that sounds perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. So it may not be May third. Or not, was it May third?
Yes, I guess.
For her presentation to go in front of the county board about what they do with Corrections? It, no, but it's, we're going to do it in conjunction with the stepping up presentation.
Okay, well, they get ready, I'll give a brief current snapshot of the Health Department. They have a hundred and twenty budgeted employees. Their current budget is fourteen point six million. Year-to-date, they're seventy-two percent spent, that eighty-three percent of the year, so they, I'm anticipating won't be coming for any sort of supplement. Projected revenue, eleven point four million. So you can see that the Health Department on a net basis is spending about a little over three million dollars. And one of the things that, on projected revenue is that they're probably the best organization in the county at getting grant revenue. And so they get, you know, considerable amounts of grant revenue that are renewed on an annual basis. So that really does fund the great majority of their operations. And their budget payroll is about seven point seven million, so it's about half their total, total budget as they are doing a lot of programs with the community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Por.
Thank you, and thank you all for having us here. And as Joe pointed out, for the three some million dollars, the tax dollars that we receive, we turned that around into sixteen million dollars. And so it's one of the... So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on our vision statement, but what we are, we are not a service provider. As you have heard, two service providers in front of us. And we are also kind of a safety net, and therefore we are providing very little direct services. This is a healthcare community, I say this over and over, we have wonderful healthcare systems. And my goal overall is always not to duplicate what the private sector can do. So our vision is create a healthy and resilient community. Our mission is promote and protect the public's health. You have heard me, I gave you the state of public health last week. You know what the tough issues are, and they are based on data from our community where we can do better, where we are worse than the national average, and that's kind of where we want to focus on. And that's where the Board of Health tells us that we need to focus on. So you have perfectly said this, decreasing health disparities in infant mortality, decrease the STD rate to national averages, decrease the obesity rate, decrease childhood lead poisoning, become a trauma-informed community, be prepared to respond to public health emergencies, and address the social determinants of health which are underlying a lot of the health symptoms that we see in our community. I do have an organizational chart attached, and I will show it to you in the beginning. You have seen it last time, last year, it hasn't changed since then. We're going directly to the head count, and what you see there, the total head count was a hundred and fourteen in FY fourteen-fifteen. In our requested budget, it is a hundred and eighteen point seven eight. However, I want to bring your attention to the next line, head count for general funds, which will be the tax support. We are going down by three FTEs in general funds. Our head count for fees is going to be increased by one. And our head count in grants is going to be increased by close to six FTEs. When you look at the total expenses, we came in last year, you approved a budget of fourteen point six million for us, and you are seeing we are jumping up in FY sixteen-seventeen up to sixteen million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And I explained that a little bit more. When we look at the sources of funds that the Health Department has, you see the general fund is there, indicated in yellow. If somebody is following me on the other side.
We are.
You are, and leave this down. So the general funds in fourteen-fifteen were just short, close to three million. And in the requested budget, they are three point, three million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. It's an increase of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I made a note on the bottom there to, according to the letter that you sent out to us, we actually would have been within our goal, but we have two thousand dollars right under the goal that you set for us for the one point five percent.
Dismissed.
Indeed. But you know, and all, all came aside, you know, this is a lot like, very similar to me, like we treated a public defender and a county attorney. I mean, we have a department that is a division that's, first of all, run very well, and not that the others aren't, but they have other fluctuations they can't control. But this one is a budget that I don't know that we need to know about and talk about how many.
I think they're different in that the public defender and the county attorney have come in in guidelines. They were considerably above their guidelines.
Excuse me.
No, but I do, I do actually need to continue because I have an ask, I have an ask from us. So what you are seeing in total revenues, we have a two million dollar increase. And this is due to an EPA grant. And the two million dollars are for, is for a contract actually, that we are going to bring, bring a contractor on. The RP is going to go out pretty quickly. And that's a small, a small contractors who can do dust wipes in homes with us for lead. This is an EPA contract to do, to do dust lead wipe samples. So if you want me to explain this, this is, you know, we all, we said as a community, you come in and you replace the soil, but what about lead-based paint? And so finally, EPA's... And so finally EPA said, yes, we know, we also need to look at the remedy, we have cleared up the soil now, we don't want to contaminate the soil again by lead-based paint in the house being dragged out and onto the soil. So for a long time, for the last probably six, seven years, EPA had contractors, Black and Beach here in Omaha, who did dust lead wipe samples. And that is in homes where we have proposed some remediation. And to make sure that those remediations or those renovations have occurred correctly, the lead dust wipe sample is like an assurance. It tells you that yes, your house is clean, now you have done everything correctly. And so that's what the dust wipe samples, they need to occur in a specific square in certain pieces of the homes. Well, last December EPA said, we are leaving Omaha, we are going back, we have spent enough time here, we have done whatever we came here to do, but we do have houses left where we actually either haven't been able to get into the homes or haven't had the time to go and do this. And so they said, how are we going to do this? And we said, they said, Health Department, can you do this for us? Can you, because we do some health education in those homes anyway. And we said, that's really not our business. It's not our business to take the dust, dust samples. You need to be a risk assessor, you need to be educated. And so, but we said, we'll take on the contract and make sure that there are contractors in this community who do this for us. So we will oversee these contractors. Hopefully, they are going to be minority contractors, small contractors who can do this work. And that's really my goal. My goal is to find contractors in North and in South Omaha who can do this.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is this, does this apply only to homes with small children or is it?
No, this applies to homes where the soil had been remediated and there are more than ten thousand homes where soil has been remediated over the last ten years.
Okay, so a home that has not had the soil remediated but is in the district.
Is not, does not qualify.
Can I get this?
And there will be no more remediation going on, right?
There is, there is, I think, a little remediation going on in some homes that they haven't, haven't been able to get access.
A few that they haven't gotten to yet.
Yeah. But the most, the majority, ninety percent of them is not. So I just want you to know, there's two million. However, now I need to ask you a question, how did we actually get to a budget that you agreed? And I said, and I've said for many years, as I said in the beginning, we are not duplicating services that are going on in our community and somebody else can do, because that's not what government is about to do. So I don't know if you had known, we had a small water laboratory, a laboratory that did water testing, water testing for E. coli and for nitrates.
You're saying you need one?
No, we have one.
Okay.
We have one, we have one right now at the Douglas County Health Center. The type of testing we do, and I have it written in there, is under three categories. One is private water. In our, out in the county area, we still have private wells, private drinking water testing, so it isn't unusual that, that well, what needs to be tested for E. coli and for nitrate. And they will bring the water samples to our laboratory and they'll be analyzed there. The revenue that we are making there over the last four years, we averaged, is about three hundred dollars a year, okay? The next type of water sampling that we are doing water testing is from public water An average of about thirteen thousand, it's probably the biggest component of the revenue, thirteen thousand on average over the last four years. And then we are doing some USDA, sorry, this, and our water sampling too. But the total revenue that we are getting from this water sampling, and we have adjusted our rate over time, is close to twenty thousand or even a little bit less. Twenty thousand dollar revenue coming in. When we evaluate what our expenses are for the person who does this part-time in the laboratory, the expenditures for that person are close to thirty-four thousand dollars. That doesn't include laboratory equipment, supply, amortization and so on. So the estimated annual loss to us is about twenty thousand dollars. So that was the first decision. We said, okay, about twenty thousand dollars left, who are we serving? So we looked at the six top clients that we served in the last few years. It is the City of Papillion, the Village of Elk Creek, the City of Lyons, Cass County Rural Water District, Lakeland Estates in Washington County and MUD.
Wow.
Okay?
That's pretty nice of you.
None of these, none of them are Douglas County besides MUD, none of them are Douglas County.
Unbelievable.
They can send their samples to a private laboratory or they can send it to the state.
Or you can charge them more.
Or we can charge them more than what, than what the private sector is charging them.
We're not even charging them.
Well, we are charging them what the private, what the private laboratories are charging them. Yeah.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Is there private labs in town that offer this?
Yes, yes.
Midwest labs or?
Yes, so Midwest Laboratory serves all fifty states, eight buildings with ninety thousand square feet of lab in support area. Nebraska Health and Human Services down in Lincoln has an environmental laboratory with nineteen, seventeen full-time staff. Cost is the same for those when they send it to these two laboratories. Why do we as Douglas County need to have a water laboratory? MUD used to use it because it was convenient from time to time to bring it to us, it's quicker than to send it to the state. But honestly, if you agree, we proposed this to the Board of Health at the last meeting, got full approval for them. We are coming to you right now and say, are you approving us to close this laboratory?
Why would you need approval? Why wouldn't you?
Commissioner Markison?
Well, I want, I want your back.
Never mind.
I want your back when the City of Lyons in Bird County comes to.
It's not so much approval you need to give cover to the board.
Yes.
Commissioner Markison?
Well, I mean, this is, I mean, you've done this over the years where you brought something that you, you think that could be done in the private sector and, and, you know, the child clinics is one of them. Okay, so I appreciate that. My question is, is that we have talked and most recently about the lead and the lead in the water. And do you see any benefits of keeping that so that we as, when you're going into those homes, can do our own testing of the water where we know their pipes are still?
Good question, but we don't do lead testing.
We don't do it at all.
We don't have, we don't have the machines to do it. It's very expensive.
Okay.
So if that would have been the case, I would have said, yes, let's, let's keep it, let's keep it on for a few years, but we don't. E. coli and nitrate are the only two types.
Does MUD test for lead?
Yes, MUD does test for lead, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I just want to make the point. You all that bound to Cass, Washington, all these places, we just need you, the board needs you to give it cover.
I think we need to transfer the crime lab to her, what do you think?
So, because if you give us the okay, we are going to start implementing it by sending notices to these customers and saying, you know, by the end of June, this laboratory is going to be closed, try to find another, another way about it. We have also that part-time staff who will be laid off. She has an option to go into an air quality position that we have at the laboratory, that's part of the time, type of work that she's already doing at this time. We really want to focus on air because we are one of the sixty-three EPA-designated anchor sites in the nation and that's where our focus needs to be.
This is, this is an open meeting and so I think we could give her direction that we support what you're doing and I do anyway. Anyone else have any comments, contrary?
Well, I just think, I mean, when you look at who we're servicing and the loss that the Douglas County taxpayers, it's kind of like, yeah. We love you, but yeah. I mean.
Do you have a question?
I do have one question.
Right ahead.
I don't know if you have an answer with you or not, but do you know how much of the budget is spent for STDs and for reducing the rate? Reducing the, the lower rate?
It's a long rate. I don't know how much, you know, a lot, most of the STD testing comes from the Adolescent Health Project, which is outside funding. There is very little, a small amount of county funding for the laboratory and I wouldn't have, I, I wouldn't.
And I'm not talking about the testing, I'm talking about to reduce the.
Yes. So again, we get, we just got a grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Adolescent Health Project from the Women's Fund. So very few property tax dollars go into that effort.
Does that answer your question?
Not really, because I'm, I'm still, I'm sure about, we have a problem, one of the five things that we have is to decrease the STD rate to the national average. And so I guess my question is, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, does the Adolescent Health Project does the work to do, does the Health Department, what do you hear?
That is what we do. That is reaching out in the library, that is the education in community centers, that is the testing in our clinic, evening hours and Saturday, Saturday hours now. So that is what the seven hundred and fifty thousand pays for. That is Health Department, not, you know, there are other agencies that are funded under the Adolescent Health Project, but that is really all internal.
So that's seven hundred and fifty thousand out of the sixteen point eight million?
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Can I know?
Dr. Por.
Chris.
Go ahead. But you have to understand that the onus is not all on the Health Department. For years, we haven't had a complete array, ever since she was on the board and cleared epidemic, the Health Department has largely been the player. For years, we didn't have YRBS as an element. They finally passed YRBS after a few of us met with superintendents, the board pushed it, we got YRBS, now we're able to get data.
Tell us what that means.
Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We were the, we were the only two counties, the urban two counties were the only two not getting that data. So OPS finally passed that. Then, one, the other landmark that kind of happened, the other piece was you didn't have the combination of updated curriculum. The Women's Health Fund put some muscle behind that with this effort with money for everybody else and now you have that. So we, we've been crying it out from the rafters, we've been kind of the only player, we haven't been used, we haven't been able to put all the mechanism together. So now, for at least about a year, you've had the mechanism together and the hope is some of this stuff rolls and starts pushing some of it down.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
That's good to know, because last year, Doctor, as you recall, when we were here, we talked about the, the YRBS at that point. Has it been completed? Is that what I'm hearing?
So the YRBS will be completed again this fall, actually for the third time.
Okay.
The YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is done every two years and so now we are starting to see trend lines because we have been able to complete it for three times. You know, I wanted to go to the bishop at one time.
Okay, and how does that help us on this initiative?
It helps us to show what the behavior of our youth is. So for example, one of the things that I think this community really didn't know about was that we have a really high suicide rate. Our young people attending, attempting suicide rate is double the national average. Nobody, nobody knew this before we didn't, before we had the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And half of those actually are, when they attempt suicide, they also need medical care. So it points out to us what are our issues and what we saw from that survey is actually the sexual behavior in our youth is not different. It's not different than it is across the nation. So, you know, we always think, what is it that we have a higher STD rate? Let's not blame our youth, actually. It's, their, their behavior is not different, but we have an infection in our community. So, you know, from a morale issue, the morale isn't bad in our youth, it's the infection rate, it's the disease rate that is high in our way. So we learn, then the other thing we learned, the first time we did the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, in regards to bullying, we looked at our youth and I said, that's really interesting, we have half the weight of the national average. But you know what happened last year? Now we just are coming up and just are above the national. So we see trends and we can hopefully develop programs when we see that in our, specifically in our youth and we don't have to go with average national data for it. So that's what, what it helps us. And the information always goes back to all the schools and the teachers and they always find it very helpful.
And Dr. Por, let me add, so we've done YRBS for six years. Within that six-year period, Building Healthy Futures has come, they've taken that data, they've invested in school, school-based health clinics. And so the goal is with that data they have in school-based health clinics, they will be able to treat some of this or be able to get an idea of this in there and get it some root of.
Okay.
Any other?
And I appreciate the, the, you know, perspective on this because, I mean, this is going to be a multi-year effort, hopefully not a multi-generational effort because we need to get on topic of this. But last year when we talked about this, we talked about the grant, which is what, a Sherwood grant or seven hundred and fifty thousand?
The Women's, the Women's Fund and the Women's Fund, Sherwood is a component of it.
Okay, and that was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, going to add six point two five FTEs to test and treat. Are those people online, are they?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, since when?
Probably fully, I would say, since September.
Okay. And of that, I, I had a note that the county's contribution was only thirty-six thousand dollars, does that sound right?
No, no.
Do we have a match on this?
It's more than, no, no match, no match. But our, Sherwood and, and the Women's Fund wanted to make very sure that we are not supplanting. So before, we had used, I would say, it is probably around three hundred thousand dollars every year for, to run the clinic. And we had to make sure that now with the seven hundred fifty, we add that on top of it, we are not, we are not supplanting any of the funds.
Okay, so all in, the Sherwood contribution or the Women's Fund contribution and the Douglas County contribution, we're running at about a million dollars. And we've been there for almost a year, is that right?
No, since September, yes.
With half a dozen people devoted exclusively to STD eradication.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Treatment and testing and treatment, okay.
And education and outreach.
Fine. Now, are we going to be able to get annual metrics relative to things are the same, things are better, or things are worse, so that we can see how this thing is actually developing?
Absolutely. I mean, I look at that, those metrics on a monthly basis.
Uh-huh.
What we are seeing is when we compare, for example, if I compare February testing data with previous February tests, we about close to fifty percent increase in testing that we are doing. So we are really doubling the testing, but as I think one of you has pointed out, the more we test, the more we find. The more we treat, the more we find, the more we treat. It's a very, it's a very difficult issue. It's a very difficult issue. I talked to somebody from Milwaukee yesterday who they have a, a pretty high STD rate too. They have been on it as long as we have and they are looking at us for best practices. They are saying, what you are doing in the library, what you are doing in the community center, we have never seen across the nation. So our people are starting to write this up and then giving it at national. So if any of you have any ideas, I think we have made it a conversation that wasn't a conversation before. I think we have kind of taken a little bit of the stigma out of it, I don't know if the stigma is the right word. We are really involving the young people to tell us what they need. Social media is not our friend, I can tell you that, because there is so much wrong information going on on social media, it's very difficult to, to counteract it. We have, starting to have issues in HIV because of hooks, the hookups on social media. So we have a lot, advertisements, TV is not our friend.
It's rough, it's rough, Auntie.
It's rough.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. So we have been up and rolling for almost a year now, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
So can we anticipate that maybe, you know, at the end of each year of this program, we kind of have a benchmark report from you?
Oh, you can have everything. Oh, you can have every six months if you want.
Well, I don't know, but that, that.
But every year, definitely, because in the, in the state of public health, and I think I sent you the, the presentation, there are some metrics in there.
Sure.
That we measure, the age range is important, male, female, and all, and all of those things. If you want a zip code map, we can give you zip code maps, we can give you hotspot maps, however, whatever you want.
I think it might be helpful to have an annual executive survey. We don't need five hundred pages of stuff, because we won't read it, frankly. We need something like this that shows us once a year, you know, where we're at. One last question, on the grant funding, is that open-ended, or is that a term of years?
You know, we were told from the beginning that it's potentially three years, but the potential to, to extend it, depending on the funders. The funders want, want data too, and so they will look at this on a regular basis, depending on them.
Okay.
Judge Rogers?
As one of, Dr. Paul, in addition to the three hundred we do and the seven hundred, we got a role too that we're playing with the Women's Fund as far as some administration piece and some of this other money is out there, is that correct? Did I hear that right, the Board of Health something? When, because when we approved some of this stuff, I thought it was an administering role, we were playing all, all that, in this understanding.
We have given that back to the Women's Fund. They are doing administration over the whole, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, you know, it's not great for government.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a question with the institution of the YRBS, and I see we're, we're going to become trauma-informed. Are we including any, anything in the YRBS, do we include anything to seek out adverse childhood experiences? Or are we doing any surveying, or are you aware of any that we're doing so young people?
I am not aware of any. Now, there are some models that I'm just starting to look at where they are actually looking at surveys. Now, the state has done an ACE study some years ago, but it's like five, six years old, and it isn't really up to date anymore. So we are, actually, the BRFS, the Behavior Risk Platform Survey, used to have about two or three questions in it. The Behavior Risk Survey is the adult risk survey, like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And the state about four or five years ago had three questions in there. The next year, they cut them all out again. So I am now again on them and say, you need to include them back in, and that, that's probably the best route to use.
Dr. Paul, can you, can you say though, we may not have that, but the PRT sampling that was done in respect, PRC. Sampling that was done in respect to the chip. There are some specific data in there broken up by zip code that we asked for. There's a strong correlation, if you could look at some of the stuff that's asked for in there in regards to violence in certain areas, what their thought is, and you can make a track to say, these are the potential hotspots where trauma can go. Now, we'll have another discussion at some point when, when, and this is where the worlds cross, this is where the criminal justice and health world cross to meet. There's going to be some stuff in the juvenile piece about the disproportion of kids that are there, and I'm, and I'm sure when we run this map, that violence will track, the kids, where they live, where they come into detention will track, and we may be able to try psychotropic medication that some of those kids are getting in and have somewhere to play and have some causes. So that's how you, that's how I would run that back, and I don't know if I'm off in that, but.
I don't know about the psychotropic.
I'm just saying, I'm, that's how I run it back, my, other than that, but I do, my only, my only point in that is, some of this data that's in there, I just don't, I just, I can't see that some of these kids coming in to some degree, I don't know family history, but you got to ask a question of. This psychotropic deal to some ages, I'm just wondering what's causing some of the stuff and what's going there, and that's what it is.
It's the cause, right.
So that, that's, let me clear up, the cause, it will take you back, not so much on.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Good job.
Are we done?
No, you're not.
We've still got some more.
Okay. Issues.
No, we're, I think we're done. I would say we're done. Is there any reason for us to continue, sir?
Commissioner Morganson.
Issues that impact expenses will bring new diseases for us and outbreaks. And you know, those, these are unforeseeable. We don't know what's going to happen. So I think those, to me, those are the unknowns. Issues that could impact revenues are getting the grants from private foundation, federal, state support, varies now very much so. Like the county overall, we get cut by the state, our big funds are getting cut. While statistics, we were fortunate, we had some fee increase because Nebraska Legislature increased the birth certificate fee. Ordinances, we try to make sure that we are covering all the services that we are providing, specifically in environmental health. And now, since the legislature in this session approved the twenty thirteen federal food code, we are now going forward, forward with the ordinance and put some training and cost to schools and daycares in there.
Can I ask a question about that? Is that, is the system of rating restaurants, as they do in some large cities, is that just too much for hot potato?
No, that's going to, we are going to propose that in the ordinance, and hopefully by next January should be in place.
And you say ordinance, is that the city?
No, it's the city ordinance, yes, yes. So now, now we really have to go ahead, because we had to wait until the food code was adopted on a state basis, and now we'll, we'll move ahead.
Thank you.
Use of technology, I want to share with you, we have a lot of technology that we are using outside of Grand Con. So we are very much involved with the NHI system, which is the Nebraska Health Information System. We use Skype and smartphone to do direct observed therapy for TB patient, and also for individuals who came, and we had to monitor them for Ebola. We use RedCap, we have a, a new development with Nebraska Medical Center that we would use RedCap in an issue where we need to monitor healthcare providers instead of sending us the data daily. We would actually use this closed system to do it. New system that we have just used is actually a text, a texting system, it's called TextOut. And what this does, it's a private portal specifically in STD, something new that we are trying. At this time, when individuals get tested, we say, you can call in, and we will give you the results, if they are negative or they are positive, you need to come back to the clinic. This system would allow us to inform the by-text message that they are negative. It doesn't inform them that they are positive. But it would eliminate a lot of paperwork that we are doing at this time. The other way, we have used this the other day in a daycare setting, where we had a pretty good-sized outbreak of norovirus, more than sixty individuals being ill. And we asked the daycare provider if she could give us the email addresses of all the people that bring their children to the daycare, and she said she would have to go through paper files, and she didn't have this available. We said, do you have the phone numbers? She said, yes, she had the phone numbers. So we were using this texting system to send messages to all the parents to get the information back to us. Within one hour, we had fifty surveys completed.
Wow.
A quick survey to, was really a fabulous way of communicating in this way. We have a patient visiting tracking system that we are using in our clinic. We use MailChimp, which is an email system with healthcare providers, when we want to send information out very quickly to our healthcare providers here in this community, this has worked well. And since January, we have digital health, which is the pads that are going on, the electronic inspection system that we are using to do west run inspections. So instead of going with a clipboard, they are going out with their little tabs, tabs, and do their inspections, have the reports on there, do their inspections right on there, and we have immediate access to it. We're using a lot of Facebook and Twitter, so we are using a lot of technology where, where we can.
Can I ask a question? You said earlier that we're getting killed by social media and television. On social media, is there any way to accelerate this, or maybe put on an RFP to a company that does a lot of, you know, email and Facebook and all this other stuff that is associated? And the other thing that, I used to work, I used to be executive director of the Nebraska Broadcasters Association, and they have free advertising, which I know you're aware of, and I wonder whether we couldn't apply for some of that?
We could, and we are, we are looking into all of it. The Facebook and the, the social media is really about, how do you get into that social media stream that the young people are looking? Because you know, where you and I go on Facebook or something, that's not where young people come in.
They're not, they're not in the social security.
So what we have, so what we have done is really talk to UNO about it, to their communication department, to their young people, and see how they can help us get into that system.
Chris Rogers has to set my watch.
So new trends, new trends that we are seeing are the farmer's markets. We're seeing a lot more farmers markets, and with them, these what we call cottage industries, where people now not only sell fruits and vegetables, but prepare food at home and bring it to the farmers market.
Right.
That is a safety issue for us, and so that's going to be a whole new area that we need to look at. You have heard about the indoor farmers market that is going to be developed, that will next year. Very exciting, very exciting, but again, it's going to bring some issues.
Commissioner Morganson?
Can, can you, what's the cottage industries again?
Cottage industry is, when you prepare food at home, and you bring it and you sell it at the market.
At the farmer's market?
Your brownies, salad, enchiladas.
I didn't know it had a name.
Yeah, it does have a name, yes, yes.
So what is you having, your cat there and cakes on?
Are the, are the food trucks sitting here somewhere? Are they in the restaurants, or where are they?
Yeah, they are in the restaurants. And the food trucks, I tell you, the food trucks are much safer than farmers markets. Food trucks have a commercial kitchen in there, food trucks are inspected by us on a regular basis, they have everything enclosed.
Do they wash their hands in there?
Yeah, you need to, you need yourself.
I, I don't go to them, because I, I don't go for that. I'm kind of Howard Hughes when it comes to that.
Good. Hand washing, you know.
But you can buy the vegetables and wash them when you get home.
Well, not from a food truck.
Not from a food truck.
Oh, not from a food truck? Oh, a food, I thought you were still on the cottages.
No, okay, thank you.
So when we talk about the healthy, what's my vision? My vision is, pretty loudly, be the healthiest community. Think we need all this to be ready to respond to community needs and where the gaps are in our community, because we are to a certain degree a safety net. I want us to be a trauma-informed community, and that had probably some work involved with that. And I think we need to make sure that the community is aware of what that means, that really is the awareness that the ACE study can have an effect on your chronic disease later on in life. And the sooner we are recognizing that somebody, we're saying, why do you look sad? Why do you look, you know? We start to ask questions, what has happened to you? We have a different way of communicating, and this is from the person at the reception to the healthcare provider. This is not only healthcare provider specific, but this is all community specific. It's kind of Memphis, Baltimore, I think, Philadelphia, there are cities who are trauma-informed cities, where the mayor has come out and said, and proclaimed, we are going to be a trauma-informed community. Needs to, need some training for the community overall, and we are starting to work in a small strategic planning group on this. My goal is also to be an accountable health community, and there are some pilots out there. Akron, Ohio is an accountable care community, accountable health community. What that means is a triple, it's called a triple aim. Means, if you are a patient in a healthcare system, you have the best experience. It means we have low healthcare costs and we have the best public health. So all those three together, so you are starting to combine healthcare with public health. Because at this time, very often, they are still in silos. You know, we do things in the community, the healthcare provider sees that person in front of them, diagnoses them correctly, but doesn't do that extra step to say, Commissioner Boyle, do you have food at home? Or is there, is there something going, maybe something is going on, on that I can help you with resources in the community? And then, potentially, the pilot would be connected to 211, which would then be trained to really say, okay, this person needs food, and there are the food pantries in the community for them to go. So meaning it's more holistically looking at a person, whereby a healthcare provider at this time is only looking very. And then the last one, I'm going to close with this one, would be, my vision would be to have more state of court funding. Because I tell you, to have eleven million in grant funding, that's ups and downs, that we are always writing grants. We are always writing grants, and so, talked to you some time ago about the levy specifically to the health department, and I never give it up as a vision of mine. Any questions?
Just a grab, you have a question?
Just, not a question, more of a statement. When you go into the restroom in a restaurant, many times you have to open the door by grabbing the handle and pulling it. Now, I was in a restaurant where they had a hook that hooked your wrist, and it showed how to use it, and then you open the door that way, so that you didn't have to touch the door, had to wash your, wash your hand, especially if you're an employee. So the other thing I've seen is where they have a small little dispenser right next to the door with a cloth and then a trash can for the dinner. So how do we get that into the restaurants, so their employees don't wash their hands, and then grab a door that's in the cabinet?
You know, that's very intrusive. I mean, it's the business person who has that business, restaurant is their business, and they would be the first one not to want to have an outbreak in their restaurant, because that goes against their profits.
So how can you in the inspection process?
That's not, we are not going to tell them that they need to do something. We can talk about best practice would be to have this, but it's up.
Would you please do what you can, as far as that? And could the city pass an ordinance that would require them to do something such as that?
Could, but would, but should.
I, I was in a restaurant recently, and an employee, not, it was a food server, was using, used the restroom and started to walk out behind me and didn't wash his hands. And I stopped him, and I said, hey, look, you know, you really need to wash your hands. He said, oh, I'm just handing out menus and stuff. And I said, that's about the worst place, because there's probably more EKoi on the menus than, you know, and people sneezing on them and all that stuff. I said, you need to wash your hands, seriously. So he did, didn't like it. But what I do, Mark, I either kick the door, I either kick the door open, or I get, somebody who's too insensitive, I get paper towels, and I even do it here, when I leave here, I use the restroom, and there's paper towels on, on this floor, you have to pull the door on the men's room to get out.
Right.
And there, I don't believe there's, there is no place to put the trash.
No.
So I get a ton of towels, and I get it around the handle, and then I throw it in the trash can by the elevator. Howard Hughes did that operation, you know, but I just, you just have to, and some of these restaurants that don't do that, I punish them, because I just take about ten towels and throw them on the floor, and eventually you look at the message, and somebody will say, yeah, some idiots throwing paper on the floor. Yeah, I think Boyle was here.
Your pictures are beautiful.
My pictures are bad. No, seriously, that's the only way to get the message, is punish them.
I just don't go there.
Don't go there.
Don't go there.
That comes from my Catholic school education, people must be punished.
They're in with the rest of the key, and they won't be needed key.
I know it. You know, well, there's an alternative to that, we don't want to go there.
Howard Hughes became part of re police in his old days.
I ain't getting there.
Just a hint. Enter suggestion.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you very much, Doctor.
You're not done yet?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Look at the grass.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
DJ. Oh, I'll take that real quick. Are you raising your fees to cover the costs and time involved and index for inflation from inspection you do at restaurants?
Yes, what we are doing, attempting to extend the fees.
Of course, the fees that are charged.
Of course, the fees that are charged for the county are not a source of revenue. You can't do that, you can't raise revenue. So the fees have to cover the costs. And what we are doing, we've started a couple of years ago in terms of budget data, when we go to the city council, we'll be coming here to the county board first and saying, this is what we're proposing and get their input. But we're going to the city council, the new ordinance change that will tie the inspection fee to a cost per hour times a number of hours. So fees will be set and charges will remain in accordance with how much time is spent at the place, times our hourly rates.
And last year you said that the dot com costs were too expensive, are they too, still too expensive?
Too expensive, yes.
Were you looking at alternatives then? Was the new technology list, was that kind of offset?
I don't think this group will let me go outside of that.
All right, now we're going to move on to purchasing and garage and Eric and John are
going to present. So first, purchasing, a quick snapshot, twenty-one budgeted employees, their current budget is about one point three million, about eighty percent spent, eighty-three percent of the year to date complete, so I'm not anticipating any sort of supplement. They generate about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue and by far, another department where the great majority of their budget goes towards their payroll, it looks like it's about ninety percentage. And then garage, John will talk about this, they have eleven employees with a current budget of about a million five. They, you know, service the county vehicles, so there's a lot of sheriff and engineer vehicles that they work on. They're about sixty-nine percent spent, eighty-three percent, so they're not going to need a supplement. They generate revenue and that revenue primarily comes from fees paid by the sheriff and the engineer's office for the work done. Their budget payroll is about five hundred and fifty thousand. And right related with the garage is general equipment, which is our budget to purchase new vehicles every year. And that's been pretty consistent in the last few years and this year again, it's targeted at about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And with that overview, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Oops, that's the wrong one. There's two on that drive, sorry. I thought I should have pulled the other one.
Sorry.
Could I take a moment and ask Mr. Morgan to read a letter that the mayor issued on the tax issue that we discussed today?
It just says, Douglas County Board of Commissioners voted unanimously today, requesting that the tax, Nebraska Tax Equalization and Review Commission reconsider your recent action to adjust property valuations in many Omaha neighborhoods. While the city is not involved in this assessment process, I am concerned about the excessive hardship this may cost taxpayers, period. If it is determined that that data used to make the decision is unreliable and inaccurate, I support the request to reconsider your decision.
And it was written to the tax commissioner?
Yeah, to Mr. Solomon, Salmon.
Chairman of Turkerson?
Chairperson, Nebraska Tax Equalization Review Commission.
So the partner revenue?
Yeah.
There you have it.
Can we, while we're waiting, can we take a quick restroom?
Sure. Yeah, that's what I do as well. I ask PJ, as a merge department between Douglas County City of Omaha, it was formed as a department here local in two thousand and four. One of the challenges, and I'll touch on it a little bit later, that we have is we do spend a lot of our manpower and workload working on a lot of city projects versus the county projects. So, you know, one of the struggles we have obviously from a manpower perspective is spending that amount of time and working with the city departments, don't always like to play by the rules. So it's an ongoing challenge to educate, especially with this day and age with a lot of grant-funded procurement and the, what we've determined are new expectations from the federal government in terms of how you spend money and show how you've utilized the process. And this here, basically our mission statement, as you can see, basically it kind of talks to essentially what our role is, we're very much a support organization. And I would like to tell people kind of in an obvious purchasing, we don't necessarily tell people what they can buy, certainly their budget, we certainly tell them how the process is going through the process. We have a state statute as well as a city charter that we must follow in terms of the process. So it's very important that we educate and continue to do so with our departments.
Excuse me, can I ask a question off the bat? I had someone who supplies towels for paper towels, that's what we're talking about earlier, but anyway, somebody who supplies the equipment and the towels. And they said that they had, this is several years ago now, they had gotten a bid that was written so that it only applied to one vendor. Do you have any way of monitoring that so that you don't have city employees or county employees writing specs that limit it to a certain company?
Absolutely. What we do, when we review the specifications, the mayor will make sure that we do everything we can to avoid that sort of appearance of basically we're writing this spec for one vendor link link. Because obviously we want to be competitive. Certainly we want to get the best possible price and functionality of what we're purchasing. But yeah, again, we want to make it an open process and be very transparent, so we want to make sure those specifications do give everybody an equal opportunity to decide.
Can I ask that you include a, at the station clause at the bottom, saying that person who, I so-and-so who prepared this RFP swears that this bid is open and competitive, does not favor one vendor over another and sign their name? I'd like to see that because I think that would really put things in a better perspective because I think it still goes on. I mean, it's hard to possibly stop.
Yeah, I'll work with the county attorney and see if that language is something that's reasonable.
Maybe mention to the city attorney too, but the city, but I think it needs to be done, I think it would really clear the air, not that I heard anything lately, but it would help.
No, that's, that's good, good feedback. Certainly that's what we want to try to avoid.
Thanks.
Kind of a little different order here, but just wanted to kind of talk to some of the things from a technology perspective that we're working in process and we're trying to do moving forward. One of the things that I think, you know, I've been here now five years, amazingly enough, it's gone by really fast, I'm glad to be here. Technology is certainly way ahead of where we are in terms of the bid process and part of that is I think due to the fact that the city's process of opening sealed bids and envelopes and that sort of thing is pretty dated. We have many entities, including the city of Lincoln Lancaster, that do an online bidding process where people are able to go ahead and submit their proposals online electronically. There's a deadline, everything is done, you know, full disclosure, everything's listed, they can provide their bid securities, everything is done basically through an online portal. The system we're currently using for our, which is Quest CDN that we utilize for our contracts that involve like construction and things like that through large documents that's just impossible for us to put out on a website. They have that functionality already in their portfolio, so that's something we can work with them towards implementing down the road.
Who, you said city of Lincoln and who else?
City of Lincoln Lancaster, they have a combined agency just like us.
Okay.
So we're their combined purchasing agency and they have like an online bidding portal.
Do you know the software they use?
They have kind of a homegrown one, to be honest with you, it's fairly pricey, but you know, we've talked to them a little bit about it, I don't know if it necessarily works for our needs, but we will continue to work with them and like take a look at it and get closer to that. It's going to, it's going to take a lot of convincing on the city side, I think, to go away from the way they've always done things because the big needs come combined nonetheless. One of the things we're trying to do from a, just being more efficient is we have County Warehouses, you know, that supports the various departments and specifically the health center directly as well as the youth center. Implementing a barcoding system so that we can manage the inventory more efficiently. We can turn the inventory quicker, we can track things, we can get rid of obsolete inventory. Working with dot com right now, we have a project, we do have money in our budget where we're getting to the point now where we're just trying to figure out what's the best option for us so we can start working towards implementing that early this fiscal year coming up. And one of the things, again, getting back to the fact that we are a combined agency and one of the things that Chair Watson mentioned often is trying to get to that point where we are fully integrated and fully part of a one organization that purchasing is basically city county, it's not split. One of the things that we had up until now is it two different purchasing manuals. You know, and again, most of what we have to follow in terms of the guidelines are the same, there are certain different things, but we're working very strongly getting this developed and we'll be implementing it the next month or so, is a full manual that's going to cover both city and county. And we'll start the education process with all the changes, ready updates that occur with that.
Will that be online or printed?
It will be online and it'll also be available for those that want printed copies. So that's something that we really feel strongly about, I think it's going to help us. Now, one of the things that we've done, I mentioned Lincoln Lancaster County, we met with them about a year and a half ago, and some other folks from Lincoln Public Schools, Lincoln Electric, UNL, and I'm trying to think some of the others, Sarpy County. We started kind of a sharing sort of group where we talked about bid opportunities, different commodities that we all had experiences with. Looking at ways, we've done a few of these where we've done site posts, we've done some other things, looked at gravel where we can do a combined bid, we're allowed to do so through the state statutes and the joint power laws. So what we can do is say, hey, we can leverage, we're going to purchase this many tons, you're going to purchase this many tons, we put it all together, we put a bid out, we can have differences in our specifications if they're locally required, but then we would actually issue a contract separately from say Lincoln Lancaster County. So we're not tied in specifically legally, but we are still leveraging the quantities that we're purchasing and we can get that company to scale and get better pricing. And it's so far, a lot of it's been just sharing and doing that sort of thing, we had some opportunity where we have gotten some better pricing doing it, so that's something we continue to move forward with. We've got a good working relationship with all of those folks. We set up a website, we can all share that. Oracle, obviously as we move forward, one of the things that some of you in the room might be aware of, they're kind of in the planning stages of working in the next version of Oracle, what's called Fusion, which is kind of a cloud-based version. So one of the things that I'm looking to do is to try to continue to leverage some training opportunities for myself, my staff, as well as anytime we have departments and new people coming in and new responsibilities, we continue to be directly involved in the training of those folks. We want to make sure that they're utilizing the system correctly and understand all the impacts of what they do and how they do it. And then one of the other things we're doing is we're one of basically two departments that actually have anything currently still running on the mainframe. We're utilizing the print shop next door to do these print tickets to basically bill out the departments that use their services and those are still being run on a system called LGFS that's on the mainframe. So we're working, we've got another project in flow right now that's going to migrate that to more of a web-based process. So our folks initially will be involved in that, but eventually we're going to go to more of a self-service approach where the departments themselves can go in, they'll place a print ticket and it will be run smoothly right through the website and then into Oracle and that'll be built out from their department. So we're real excited about that, that's been a long time going. Joe mentioned the budget information, so this is just a kind of a screenshot here again, talking and it's on the handouts that we sent you, handed out to you as well. Headcount staying pretty stable there, but one of the things to kind of note is obviously we do have some amount of revenue, not real significant, but it tracks around thirteen, fourteen percent because of the fact that we have, like you said, about ninety percent of our expense is always payroll. Probably one of the impact areas that we have, since we have a majority of our employees out of a lot of departments under contracts with the unions, you know, those are the things that really can control those expenses to a great extent. So we do everything we can on the backend, we try to control the other expenses that we can. And so this is just another look at specifically the overall budget.
And they came in within guidelines?
Yeah, we came in more specifically, yeah, we are meeting targets, so. I think that's really all I have, some more to ask on the John. You talked about the garage and general equipment.
Good afternoon. There's the garage mission statement, kind of outlines what we do as a whole. I think sometimes my guys don't appreciate it just because people take for granted the work that they do. But I do think that we've continued to make improvements as a whole. I think that the staff that I've got out there seem to be pretty happy with the way things are going, the direction of the shop and such. Some of the goals and objectives, I know last year we had some discussions about the fleet management policy, fleet management council and that. I do have a draft form of the fleet management policy in, under review right now.
Mary Ann, do you have the handout? Does the handout come around?
No, there should have been, there should have been two separate that were in the handout.
It says garage at the end, purchasing, I think I gave you two.
I need a person.
Here's purchasing.
Yeah, I need that.
I got, I got it.
Okay, so we got the garage now, all right. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, it's okay. So like I said, with the, there is a draft of the fleet management policy put together that's currently being reviewed. We had an audit about seventeen, eighteen months ago, just to kind of go over the procedures and the things that were taking place, how we were doing operations. Mike Morgan keep out a lot of good things, found some things that maybe we should start tracking a little bit different. We've implemented all those as well, everything's documented, I keep records, everything in the shop there. One of the things that came up was the external agencies' labor rate. Currently, right now, we have a forty-one dollar an hour labor rate. It's well below the industry standard for maintenance of any kind, whether it's on light duty equipment, whether it's on heavy equipment. With us internally, it really has no relevance because we're charging ourselves essentially. So the forty-one dollar rate, the proposal was ninety-one dollars would be the end state after a three-year phase in. So we would start with a fifteen dollar increase.
I'm not tracking you at all, who are external agencies?
ANSA, Eastern Nebraska Office of Aging, Eastern Nebraska Health Services, Metro Area Planning. They do, we do maintenance and repairs and fueling for their vehicles and equipment.
So this is an income matter, not an, not an expense?
Yes, sir.
I misunderstood. Those expenses.
So what we are in turn doing is implementing a rate increase for those external agencies will in turn increase the revenue on the garage side. And as we get through the next slide, you'll see that we don't have a large generational revenue just because we service primarily ninety, ninety percent of the county-owned fleet. Continue to reduce fleet average cost per mile, that's something that we've done over the last three years significantly. I think we're about seventy percent less than we were four years ago. There's a number of things that go into that, not only new equipment, we've purchased a lot of new equipment, phased out a lot of old equipment that required a lot of maintenance and service upkeep. Fuel costs have gone down, we've shopped around a lot as far as oils, lubricants, parts, everything that we do is an operation. I don't like to get locked into a one-year or two-year contract or anything of that sort because it's more feasible for me to, hey, every three months you give me your best price. And vendors are starting to realize that what may have been happening in the past where, you know, they slowly increased prices over the four or five-year term and no one's questioning it, and they continue to do it. So we've cut costs significantly across the board, which in turn has reduced revenue because we're not charging as much out, but we've continued to maintain and stay under our budget every year, to include this year as well.
Do you, getting, I guess, do you lease, you talk about continue to reduce fleet average cost per mile, are you, I know, I'm sure you looked at leasing particularly heavy equipment, what about that?
The highway department is generally who deals with all the heavy equipment and they do use the lease program. We write specifications for them, they do utilize it for some of the graders and the loaders and that stuff. And it does make sense because there's a number of things that are included in that, the specifications written, a specific way to cover maintenance and warranty and all that other stuff. But from a mere light duty all the way through a medium-duty pickup, it's really not feasible because we buy everything off state contract. So we get it twelve to fourteen thousand dollars under NSRP than what the average consumer would, would cost them to go buy that vehicle, a piece of equipment somewhere.
I just saw some car come through, it was like thirty thousand dollars for a Ford Fusion, wow.
Not, not from us. I pay about fourteen eight for a Fusion.
That's what I mean about that list that comes through, we're sitting there talking about other stuff.
So again, managed equipment procurement, reassignment disposal, we've done that. There's a surplus list that probably came by the board, I believe, today, it was on the agenda. Those are vehicles that have just cost too much money to maintain them. Some of them are aged, some of them are mileage, some of them have significant repairs. Some of those you saw that maybe were a little bit newer piece of equipment, they were uninsured motorists that hit, that one of our law enforcement agencies deputies hit that vehicle or were hit by another vehicle and they weren't insured and it's a total loss. We don't get any money for that and we knew we can to send it surplus. We utilize public surplus, which is an online auction system. We utilize public surplus, which is an online auction system now, to try and recover some of that money, but that money does go back to the general fund.
Do you allow county departments to accept the transfer of a law enforcement vehicle into their fleet, or do you, what do you do with them? The reason I ask is that a long time ago, the city used to take their police cruisers and let the Parks Department have them, and of course, you're getting two miles to a gallon on those seven-hundred-thousand horsepower engines, you know?
We have a handful of the Crown Vics remaining in service. Some are at the youth center. We leave the, we leave the partitions, the cage inserts. The youth center can use those. The corrections center can, and they're just not getting a lot of mileage, but they make sense versus replacing with a brand-new vehicle. So, if it's something that was assigned to the patrol unit, the sheriff's department, and we're getting ready to pull it out of service and replace it with a Ford Explorer lease utility, absolutely. The vehicle's in good shape. It's not costing us a ton of money to operate it. I can reassign it to, say, corrections, and they can use it to take people from corrections to the hospital.
I'd be real curious to see if the, if the room is efficient to do that.
I would say based on the mere, the minimal amount of use, it absolutely is versus buying them a new vehicle at fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars to have it sit and get twelve hundred miles a year put on it.
If that's what they're doing, that'd be fine. Go ahead.
What is the average age, the average mile on a vehicle? Now, well, let's exclude the sheriff's.
Average age is, right now, is about five and a half years. That is the average as a whole. When I first started here, about three, a little over three and a half years ago, we were at about nine years was the average age of the fleet. Average miles, I don't have it off the top of my head exactly what our total is as a fleet, but I can give that to you.
Now, I'd like to know how many miles an average vehicle puts on a tow truck.
I'm also curious whether, I read that the city is closing, I believe they're closing the twenty-eighths, something, Twenty-S sixth and Lake, Lake Street Public Works Garage, and they're moving it to someplace like Fifteenth and Jane or someplace.
Eighteenth and Jane, I believe.
Yeah, which kind of blows my mind, but.
Really? Are you serious?
Yeah.
Yes, they just opened a fuel station over there.
They're closing, moving cars, everything?
I think everything from Lake is being.
Yeah, and of course, twenty-four, Twenty-S sixth and Lake is right on top of the interstate, so I don't know what they're thinking, but anyway.
Well, no, that, I'm going to just tell you that people have been asking for that for years because of the development possibilities or what. Yeah.
Okay.
Going out of.
Well, that's happened.
Wow.
I wanted to ask, what is your relationship with the city garage? Anything at all?
Very little. I mean, I, I talk to Mark quite a bit. Mark McCoy is their, is their fleet management, fleet manager for the, for the city. He manages basically all the separate, they're different.
What does a police cruiser do if it has a breakdown in Elkhorn? Do they have to go to Fifteenth and Jane Street to get a tow truck, or, I mean, are you participating? Is it mutual aid kind of stuff or not?
Absolutely. If it, if it was something where it was an emergency situation where they needed to get something looked at.
I'll say it's not an emergency.
Non-emergency, no. They would, they would use their contracted tow service to take the cruiser wherever it needed to be, wherever they needed it taken to.
Okay, thanks.
What about hybrids?
I'm sorry?
Are we doing anything or looking at hybrids, CNG or electric?
We have one hybrid in the fleet now, and we have two CNG. They are all three Honda Civics, and I don't know if you recall, a couple of years ago, I did, I did a cost analysis on them, and it was, we were paying triple the money to buy the vehicle up front, and we were getting exact, exact cost per mile to maintain those vehicles throughout a seven, eight-year. The problem is with a CNG or a hybrid, your real cost profit or return is eight to ten years down the road, while we know vehicles don't last that long in Nebraska just because of the roads and the rust and all those things that go into it. So, based on that, I saw no significant savings, and actually, it was about, it cost us more on the long one as a county to operate CNG or hybrids.
Well, I borrowed a car to go up to the girl's refrigerator with Judge Daniels, and I didn't realize that when I tried to get gas the way back, it was like, I mean, it was the strangest combination. It was like ninety percent corn and five percent gas and one percent cod oil or something. I mean, I'm telling you, I had to drive to three different gas stations, and I finally found someplace that had about five pumps, and it was weird. This was this, and this was that, and I'm like, I thought I got the car filled, but whatever it was, it was a Chevrolet, and it was a fine car, but I was so surprised by the strange mixture. So, I mean, I think you're right to just go with something else.
Did you do that to punish Mike?
Yes, he did. I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I think we were very accommodating.
We'll give you some ideas for next time.
Was it a car you bought a bolt? It wasn't a bolt. It was a car.
No, it was not a bolt.
Oh, okay.
No, they were all Hondas. The hybrid and the CNG were all Honda Civics.
And they weren't totally electric. They were also in electric.
The hybrid is, yes, one is total electric and one, and the two CNGs are totally CNGs. Now, the highway has lots of dual, dual fuel where you can run it unleaded. There's a switch to switch it over and run CNG, and I can tell you, looking at the fuel reports, that ninety percent of the time it's fuel. It's getting unleaded because it doesn't operate as part of the town, so there's no station for it.
Who's got those?
The engineers. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, this year, there's like five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand for, and how many vehicles will they buy?
If we stay on course, we'll grow rat. We're doing about twenty-seven vehicles per year. And that is, if I look at a certain department and I see that they had a Malibu in the past, and they're generally using one operator, they're not taking three or four people, like it saved three thousand dollars buying a Focus to do the same job that they were using a Malibu. So, it's cheaper to operate it, gets better gas mileage, and it's the least expensive car. So, this year, we did twenty-seven vehicles with.
So, you're turning the fleet quicker, huh?
Absolutely.
So, let me ask you, do you, do you not buy radios and other stuff? I mean, just come and AMF them? You don't even buy any of that stuff? Is it totally stripped down, or what do you do?
No, there, there are a lot of options that you can add based on a state contract, but the.
Why would you do that? I mean.
As far as.
If there's no turnover, why is the reason? It used to be that you buy a car that was halfway equipped so you could have resale, but you're not reselling these?
No, we are. They're being auctioned. We put them on public surplus and sell them. And actually, we're more profitable doing that than we were doing the in-person auctions at the garage.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think anybody buying a car, complete that at your auction is going to say, oh, does it got a radio? I don't want it if it doesn't. I mean, I think people don't care. I could be wrong. Mary Ann?
Can, can we go back to the CNG for just a second? Because when that was brought, we actually were right in this room, when Mark Doyle came, Commissioner Tusha had him come, and we talked about that. There was also talk about a station being placed at the engineer's office so that it would make more sense. That, is that no longer on the table?
I don't believe so. I know that we did have discussions about that. I, I met, had lunch with them, broke down numbers on what it costs us to buy vehicles, kind of like I've explained here, as far as from a cost perspective. I know that in order to get a standard slow-fill station, which is something that have to get hooked up and run overnight to fill a vehicle up, it was about a million dollars. So, when you figure in, that's really not going to do us any good, especially if they're looking for the roads equipment and that stuff. And there was just a lot of discussions. The engineers said they have no interest in purchasing CNG fuel dump trucks or anything like that, because if you make it a public station, then you start running into problems with roads getting cleared because it's a CNG truck, and they have priority, a crew uses the pump, and it just kind of died off and was never really picked back up.
I just never knew where it went.
Well, I think MVD was planning on putting one in front of AM's pump, but that kind of blew up. Oh, wait, add that T.
Can't do it. Oh, my.
Live. It's broadcast live.
All right, I think we touched on the budget already. I think you want to hear the budget.
Yeah, we. Does anybody have any questions to me?
Well, lights in.
Sorry, it didn't work out.
I had two questions. One for the garage, one for purchasing. Do you, is there any way you can use any of those government forfeiture funds to service and maintain county vehicles?
Been down that road. The answer is, if the sheriff says, if the sheriff said yes to it, then there is a way to do it, but the sheriff has said no, so this, the, the way the rules are written, it's exclusive within the sheriff's approval view how those monies are spent.
So, it's prerogative.
Yes.
But, and his forfeiture money's way down.
I know.
So, I don't think that's a real viable option right now.
And for the purchasing department, is the city not paying sufficiently to cover the, the cost?
Well. Yeah, I mean, I would say probably right now where we are with interlocal, I've had many conversations with folks here within the room, that I would say probably no. I don't know, again, I don't know all the details of what else was traded in addition to just the purchasing departments, the other parkland and other things that were involved, that I think was part of it, that when we look strictly at what I'm getting paid in terms of revenue from the city, and if I take that percentage of time I'm spending in my department against the city projects, it's not equal.
So, how do you?
It's a good question. Any other questions or comments?
Staffing, are you able to hire techs okay? I mean, there, there, there's not enough mechanics around in the world right now. Are you staying staffed all right?
I, I had a number retire over the course of the last couple of years. I am. I, I've got some folks that have left very good jobs that were looking long-term retirement benefits and all those other things, and, and it's been tough, especially when we kind of ran into that union and what steps and hiring and all that. You've got a guy that's, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six hours an hour at a dealership, and you're asking him to come work for you for twenty-two dollars an hour and pay a half percent and pay for, it, it was tough, but I think that we've got a real good group there now, and that seems to enjoy what they're doing and are fishing, so.
Very good. Who is your union?
That particular union for the mechanics is the Teamsters.
Mr. Bartison?
Well, I kind of want to go back to Doug's question because I didn't realize that, that we weren't, we weren't where we should be on getting what we should be getting from the city.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's basically from my perspective, I mean, in the last five years, what I've seen, we've had folks retire the way the interlocal was written. Basically, city employees were, after two years, were considered loaned employees that were being reimbursed. Purchasing, county purchasing was reimbursed in the city for their salary and benefits. After they retired, then they could replace them with county employees. So, in either case, it's coming out of our pocket. The other side of it, in terms of how it was written at the time, back in two thousand and four, I'm not sure the dollars and how those were figured out, if that was equitable. It makes some pure numbers right now. It's not because, you know, we're paying, you know, you know, our salary, you know, basically ninety percent of our budget. We're getting about roughly fifty thousand, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars back from the city every year between the mailroom reimbursement and an employee in the print shop. So, it's something that, it's probably requires more discussion. Mr. Kraft has a statement. I want to say that this doesn't mean that we all agree with what he's saying. Go ahead.
Wasn't it taken over the parks?
They did. We made out on that at the beginning, yeah.
When you balance the two, I think we're coming out with it.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, like I say, I don't know all the details in the background. I just.
The repairs of the pumps at Hartland Park.
Yeah.
Let them be.
Three-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yeah, I, I think we've made.
Yeah, moving forward, I guess, just from a pure financial perspective and what I have to manage in budget and the workload that I have, it appears that they're getting a really good deal on the purchasing level.
Right, on the purchasing department and not on the parks.
Well, what about, is there something we can do to remedy that, or is it just a done deal? Well, I mean, until the interlocal is, I guess, addressed, I think there's not much we can do. Well, I think we ought to be talking about it. I mean, I, my own feeling is, this is way over beam, which is not unusual, but it seems to me that offices like the assessor's expenses and, you know, the treasurer's expenses, that we ought to be able to charge or have political subdivisions participate in their operations, because just the assessor's office, while it's in some confusion right now a little bit, they are the ones who produce the tax revenue for the city. So, you know, we ought to say, okay, listen, you got to chip in something because we're doing all the valuation for you. The treasurer, I think they balked at paying a percentage to collect money. We really need to open talks with them about contributing, because they're freeloading on a lot of these things, and one of them may be freeloading on purchasing. So, can all the city employees and start all the way. That's already done. Any other questions, comments, or statements? Mr. Kraft, one last chance.
Okay.
Thank you. Great, good job. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, last but certainly not least is environmental services. Little snapshot before I turn it over to Ken. And as a little subsector then is the landfill too. Environmental Services has twenty-one employees. Their current budget is about fifteen million dollars with about another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand at the landfill for maintenance. Their budget status is sixty-five percent spent at eighty-three percent in the year, so there's not going to be a supplement there, and the landfill is ninety-six, but that's a timing issue. That's just how they do their purchase orders, so there won't be an issue there either. But the thing to see is that projected revenue at the landfill is about sixteen-point-four. The thing we always have to remember with the landfill, it's probably the only county department that kind of operates as a profitable business on its own, that it earns about an eight to nine percent gross margin. So, you know, having greater expenses usually means greater revenues there, so, so that's a good thing. So, that's something that always keep in mind when we look at the landfill is that it is a, actually a profit center within the county. And their payroll is about a million-three, so most of their expenses are not payroll-related. Phil, turn it over to Ken.
I hope I pulled the right file down here. Looks like maybe I didn't. Now I managed not to. Okay. I will, I will give you the information.
Can I? I know how to do that.
No, the graphic, the graphic isn't at that point. Not that important. Basically, the Environmental Services Department covers five functional areas. The landfill is the biggest component of that from a revenue standpoint, also from an expenditure standpoint. Land use plan and building permits and inspection, stormwater permit administration implementation, due control, and landscaping, snow removal operations. We have twenty full-time employees, one part-time employee, and it ranges between ten and fifteen seasonal temporary employees, just kind of consistent with, with the conversation that just got had regarding purchasing. We do have two of the twenty, twenty-one full-time employees are on loan to the city of Omaha pursuant to the parks interlocal.
How many?
Two.
Two, okay.
Two. So, there's approximately a hundred-and-forty-three thousand revenue that comes back from the city reimbursing the county for those two employees' cost and benefits.
Plus the phone.
Yeah. There, there are days when I don't mind not. Just in terms of, of kind of the, the goals and objectives going forward, we are entering into a, a review of the county's comprehensive land use development plan, which was approved by, by the county board in two thousand and six. The plan is basically going to stay the same in terms of the priorities and, and the functions of that plan, but a couple of the, of noted items that will be added. You heard Audi talk a little bit about local food production and things like that, so we are going to shore up the comprehensive plan with, with some definitions and use types that relate to local food production, and also address that in terms of where in the county particular land uses might, might be compatible with that. And there are also elements of solid waste management that will be added into the plan to, to shore up the definitions and the use types and so on, and that'll be consistent with, with some of the things that are, are mentioned in the integrated solid waste management plan that was developed through MAPPA a couple of years ago. In terms of solid waste management, we're working in collaboration with the city of Omaha, MAPPA, and other metro area entities to, to basically look at, at all aspects of solid waste management, consistent with that integrated solid waste management plan that, again, was developed through MAPPA in two thousand and twelve. Obviously, solid waste has been in the news lately. I briefed. Obviously, solid waste has been in the news lately. I briefed the county board a few weeks ago on, on some aspects of that. There continue to be discussions. The, the city of Omaha is, is entertaining right now a potential contract for a study dealing primarily with yard waste and how they, how they would handle that. But it will also deal with, I believe, some of the, the aspects of collection, in terms of automated collection, using carts instead of bins and things like that. So, there's some of that discussion going on, and then there's also some discussion that, that our department has had with the county attorney's office just looking at, at other potential aspects of, of solid waste management, how we can move towards a more sustainable system. And some of the things that, that come into play here is just the dynamics of, of what has changed over the past, I would say, ten or ten-plus years. And that is the, the amount of, of solid waste that's generated here that's actually going to, to other landfill locations. The Integrated Solid Waste Management Act that was passed in the early nineties by Nebraska set up a system of regional landfills, and there are twenty-three in the state right now. And we have probably the, the biggest landfill resource in the state, maybe in the country, I'm not, not quite sure. A lot of landfill space, airspace available and a lot of life, projected lifespan. But there are also issues of, of more waste continuing to flow out of the county. So, so we are, are looking internally at, at some, some potential, I would say, solutions, but, but some opportunities there that, that we come back and, and present to the board at, at some point. That, that just moves us down the road towards a more sustainable system where it, it addresses the revenue question a little bit. It addresses recycling, it addresses diversion, it, it addresses to some aspects the yard waste issue and composting and, and landfilling, et cetera. So, there will be some of that additional things coming forward, I, I would say probably in the next couple of months potentially. We're waiting on, on some additional research by the, the county attorney's office on some things related to that. Our stormwater permit administration, we continue to implement that particular permit, a number of different items there. One of the things that, that I've done this past year is to hire a part-time stormwater assistant. And she is primarily tasked with doing outfall inspections and assisting in some duties that were assigned to the building inspectors with the upturn in building permit activity. I've had to take them back off of that, and, and they're, they're dedicated full-time now to permits and inspection activities, which interact with the, with the stormwater stuff, but it's, it's primarily building permit related. One of the things that we are also doing there is, is heavily implementing technology. We are, that, we are the counties, from, from a county's perspective, we are the largest by far user of GIS services through, through our GIS department. All of our IT things are coordinated through dot-com. We have utilized very significantly the City Works Work Order Management System. We have all of those, those things tied in with the city, city source apps that, that the public has. And we have the workflow set up so that when we, we have a report from a, from a citizen, that goes directly into the workflow. And we don't, we don't have to have somebody transcribe an email, we don't have to transcribe a phone call, voicemail, anything like that. It goes right to the workflow and gets assigned to the right person. It's worked really well on the city side too, they use it fairly extensively in their parks department as well. So, so that, that particular enabling technology is, is really closely tied with GIS as well. So, we can see all this stuff from a, from a map standpoint.
Can you use that for potholes?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely. That's, I think, that's probably one of the, on the city side, that's probably one of the most heavily used reports is, is to report potholes. And it captures your, your location right away too, so, it's all right there. Those are, those are the primary aspects. I joke, I think they give overview of, of kind of revenue and so on. So, I'm going to, here to that, have answered any questions yet.
Joey, have questions on it?
Well, Karen actually pointed out something, but under stormwater permit administration, it's, you talk about evaluating the use of drones for outfall inspections to increase efficiency.
Right.
Well.
Yes, one of the, one of the things that we have, we have used drones at the health center to do some, some canopy, uh, low-level photography. But one of the things that we would evaluate for outfall inspections is to contract with a, with a service that would allow us to go and, and fly into areas along creeks to minimize the, the time expense for, for doing that with, with on-field personnel. And that, that's still in the evaluation standpoint. We haven't decided whether, whether to pursue that or not.
We contract though, we're not, we don't own one.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to buy one. We've gone down that road already.
Okay.
But one of the.
Go ahead.
No, you first.
Well, I, I didn't read that far, I was still writing things about low-impact development, which I'll ask you about. But anyway, no, the, the drone deal is that, you know, we're going to require every department elected official to come to the county board publicly talk about drone usage. And I personally don't want to see us have phone any drones. And we really have to have reputable companies doing these drones because they're going to have to have both who insurance that just, you know, names us as primary insured as far as I'm concerned. So, anyway, that's my thoughts, and I'm glad you taught that. It's going to go on your record, Karen, thank you.
Yeah, we, we had run that through the, through the county attorney's office, did you?
Yeah.
I'm glad they told us.
Ken, I'm just interested, what, what's the, what's the, what's the outreach program you do at Miller Public Schools?
Uh, the outreach program at Miller Public Schools is something that's just in its infancy right now. I've had some discussions with some of the assistant superintendents and, and folks that are involved in the, in kind of the science curriculum, primarily at the elementary school age.
Are you piloting something?
Yeah, it would, it would be a, a pilot that, that we're, again, still trying to develop. The basic idea would be to utilize GIS technology at individual schools. We would basically go in and, and do, and it's, it's almost like a, an engineering analysis, hydrology type analysis and drainage that a, an engineer would do all on a, on a very simplified scale that the students would be able to do. They'd be able to then potentially design some of their own stormwater projects. I'm sure you just mentioned LID, so that would, that would be a potential fix there, designing rain gardens and things like that that, that might help solve some drainage problems right on the school. That engages the students, it engages some of the parents. And the thought is that rather than directing a lot of what has traditionally been done with stormwater education towards parents, be directed towards elementary school kids and let, let them bring it back up into the house, into the parents, and, and do it that way.
Can you, you feel you can just take one pilot on at a time?
Well, we, we will find out, I think fairly quickly, whether, whether they're interested in going forward with it right now. I can tell you that if they're not interested in going forward with it, then I'm, I'm probably going to approach OPS.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to, I got a potential.
Commissioner Morgan, and then? Yard waste, the city, you're working on that, that's going forward?
Uh, the city is, is going to entertain a contract, it sounds like, with SCS engineers, that do a lot of, of work in the landfill, landfill area. And they're going to assess, my understanding, at least at this point, the scope of their study is going to be to assess the, the relative benefits of composting versus landfilling yard waste. That, that's going to be a major piece of that.
I know Marty said, you know, they wanted to try to do the yard waste, but they're kind of studying it now, it's what's taking place.
They, they want to.
So, they haven't made a decision, really.
Right, and, and part of, part of that is going to be their evaluation of their existing composting, omagro operation. Because in two thousand twenty, they're going to have to relocate that. If, if it's going forward, they have to relocate that because there's a major plant expansion for that wastewater treatment facility in two thousand twenty. So, so something's going to have to happen.
Well, keep us updated and let us know your expertise, advice.
And I, I just had a question about, do we have a commercial tire recycling facility in Nebraska at all, or how do we handle our tire recycling?
The tire stuff is all handled by the private sector.
Okay.
Nothing on the public side. You will see when you go into any place to get your tires redone, they're going to charge you a tire fee, and that's part of the disposal process, and.
But it doesn't end up in our landfill?
No, tires are specifically banned from landfills.
Thank you. Doug?
Okay. Eric J asked one question. I have two. On this environmental services department relocation, you talked about that last week too. It says, "Public meeting space will facilitate public use and enhanced security." Is that for the public, public meeting space or just for county employees?
Both.
Oh, okay.
Both, it's primary, the, the safety and security issue that we have in our current facility is that, is we, we don't have any separation between public space and, and office space. It's very difficult to, to maintain some of the, the security aspects that we should have. And that compromises, at least from, from my perspective, both, both employees and public coming in. So, that's something that, that we feel very important, it is very important to do in the facility. And the way it's being, at least the concept is put in place, that those, those spaces will be physically separated so that we can ensure, better ensure that the safety of, of both employees and public.
Problem is people coming in to do, to do business with the, with the departments.
With the department also, it would be public meetings such as the planning commissioner's board adjustment and other, other public meetings that would not necessarily be just meeting of staffs.
And my last question, are you coordinating anything with the local NRD suggesting dry dams or anything as an alternative for large dams they want to build?
Uh, we have a lot of our own, own stormwater related things that have related to our stormwater permit and, and requirements that are within that permit. We do some coordination with the NRD in terms of floodplain administration. We have, have some joint things going on with them. I just got notice, I mean verbally, haven't seen in writing yet. I applied for, for a grant for one of their cost share programs that we're going to use as part of that funding for a project at the health center. So, yes, there, there's some coordination there.
But they're not about to ask us for advice on flood control. We have a slightly different philosophy.
No. Let me, anybody else have questions?
I'll ask it off there.
Is that it?
I wanted to ask you about low-impact development. We're still committed to low-impact development, right? And we're not trying to take a walk on that or anything?
No, that's, if you look at the comprehensive development plan, LID and green infrastructure is a big component of that.
Okay.
There's no, there's no move away from that at all.
All right. Then I want to ask you about the, the permits and inspections section of your office. My impression's always been, and then the sheriff comes in and sets me straight about, there's seventy thousand people out in the county outside the city. And so I assume that's the same people you're serving that develop and some of the rest of the building permits and all, is that right?
We serve, we serve them, we also have an interlocal with the city of Bennington, so we handle their permits inspection.
How about that?
We also do Waterloo, and we do, right now, all of the electrical permits for Ballard.
Great.
And that, so we have, we have, we're leveraging some good resources there. We bring in a fair amount of revenue. In the past couple of years, it's been going up. I put a fairly conservative estimate on the revenue going forward, but I'm guessing you're okay as long as I come in over that.
Let me ask a question about trees. There's this beetle thing coming in and destroying all these elm trees and so forth, whatever they are. Should we, should we play any role in any of that, in tree planting or removal of trees?
We, we have done and will continue to do significant amounts of tree planting on the properties that we own.
Okay.
Continue to do that. I've been very active in past years in the Nebraska Harvest Association. And I have contacts there. The, the other thing that we've done on our property is that we've tried to identify where we have potential susceptible ash trees. And I've been systematically removing those. We only have a couple of large ash trees left on the health center campus, for example. We have a number of them out at the Fitzgerald home, and we'll do, be doing an evaluation of those later this month. And we'll identify which ones ought to go, which, which ones should stay.
Running around in your initial presentation, you talked about snow removal. Do you get involved in snow removal?
Yes.
Okay, why, why don't you use the Tom Doyle's operation for snow removal?
We don't really have the same kind of needs there. We use some of our own staff and we use a contract for snow removal at the health center and some of our other properties.
You come all the way into the health center to remove snow? From where? Where are you?
That's where we're located.
What's, what's that?
They have a little office at the health center.
That's where our staff is located.
Goodwill Building, the Goodwill Building.
Staff is located.
Okay.
Yeah, for the, for that snow removal stuff, yeah.
What's that?
For the snow removal stuff, they're locating.
Well, it seems to me, I mean, I know that everybody wants to do their own thing, but it seems to me that, you know, we ought to be talking about, you know, the city doing some snow removal and we trade them off, and we do the stuff out west and vice versa. I just, you know, reminds me of the Central Park Mall or Lagy Mall, you know, where it used to end at Tenth Street and the county had everything on the other side. Took four votes to get that turned over to the city, but that was a classic case of, of, I think, a screwball operation. But I, I'm not saying it's a screwball, but I think we need to, we need to start focusing on things that we just can't have our own deal. I mean, the fire department used to have its own snow removal service too, and that's gone, I think. But anyway, this is someplace that makes me a little crazy where we're doing our own thing. I think there are efficiencies that we could have if we contracted with the city to do it, for example, or out west with the county engineering surveyor. That's just my comment, and I intend to pursue it if I can.
Mr. Bartison?
Well, I love you, Mikey. I really do. But, 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 sometimes, you know, there, other people can just do it better. And snow removal is one of those that I think can be done better. And so, we could talk to the county engineers about it and see.
County engineer wouldn't be doing Forty Second Street.
Well.
The county engineer would be welcome at Elkhorn, I mean.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't have a problem with that.
I know, that's true.
Great, I mean, the sheriff would be welcome out there too.
That's, I'm just giving you a hard time.
I know, you, you still loving?
I do.
Okay, good deal.
Any other questions or comments?
There's your pen.
Does you want to make a statement? Okay. So, there is development taking place west of Seventy Second Street, that's just what I was confirming.
Yes, absolutely. Do you want to drive out there with me someday? I'll show you.
Well, I have to stop, I can be stopped and get food a couple times.
Absolutely. We got lots of good restaurants out there.
I'll pay for the gas if you leave them out there.